Quality of life, allowing them to reach their full potential. During its meetings, the Paulsbow City Council will use this lens to inclusively view its discussions and actions. And Ms. Crowe, would you do the land acknowledgement, please?
Certainly. The Paulsbow is located on the ancestral lands of the indigenous Suamish people, for whom this place was known as Tuk Tuk Lots, or the land of the vine maples. In a quote from Chief Seattle, "Every part of this soil is sacred in the estimation of my people. Every hillside, every valley, every plain and grove has been hollowed by some sad or happy event and days long vanished."
With that, would you please stand as you're able to for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next thing on our agenda is to review the agenda, and as far as I know, there are no changes. I'm looking around, no changes to the agenda. Okay, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Madam Mayor, move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Newell?
Newell, aye.
Livdahl, aye.
Tabor, aye.
Stern, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Crowe, aye.
Thank you, Council. Now it's public comment. If you have comment for the Council, please step to the podium. You have three minutes and state your name for the record.
Okay, oh, it's on. Ladies and gentlemen of the Council, thank you for having me this evening. My name is Joe Morrison. I'm the Executive Director of the Kitsap Economic Development Alliance. Thank you for your decades of partnership as an investor in economic development. It's come to my attention that you're considering cutting economic development funding. I'm here to ask you not to do that and to maintain your investment of $15,000 a year in our organization moving forward for the next three years. So what I'll do is I'll talk about some of the major things we've done for Paulsbow this year and over the past years, and then I'll make my request. Over this year, I've spent a month or more of my time working on the Old Hava Campus project. Specifically, that's the attempt to get a second building built in one of the areas that presents the greatest economic development opportunity or one of in our community. Well, what does that look like? That looks like recruiting and taking a group of public and private leaders from Kitsap County out to Spokane to evaluate and learn about their public health university district, how they funded it, bring that back here for both momentum building and best practice integration. It looks like directly connecting potential investors and partners in such a potential second building as a business developer directly to Olympic College and countless other things that I've been working on on that project. My colleague meanwhile right now, James Davis, is up at Vibe CoWorks. That's appropriate because over the last few years, he's obtained $100,000 or more from the Washington State Micro Enterprise Association to be the fiduciary and the fiscal agent for the Matchstick Lab Micro Business Accelerator Program. We obtain the capital, we work on the strategy, and we offer that program with Vibe CoWorks Matchstick Labs, which has trained 48 entrepreneurs in across Kitsap communities, including folks like Megan at Indigo, who was in our first cohort. So those are some of the big things we do, but we do a lot of small things, too. Everything from holding a childcare listening session at Martha and Mary to increase childcare capacity in our community a couple of months ago, to calling Bellevue Brokers when they're ignoring a potential deal on the Albertson's Building, to inviting the great Heather Wright, who's amazing by the way, to participate in a board session on permitting efficiency. We do a lot. So I think that's a good investment, and I'm going to ask you to maintain that investment in our organization moving forward. All Kitsap jurisdictions increased their investment in economic development over the last few years, Paulsbow as well, and I'm very grateful for it. I'll also take a moment to reference that you're going to hear from a colleague of mine, Melissa Tano, at the Small Business Development Center shortly. They have gone down from two positions to one. We're all facing tighter budgets and state cuts. Your continued support of economic development is key. And now we have one person who can help small businesses look at leases, deal with accounting, think about marketing. And I would ask that you support them with a $10,000 a year investment as well, as well as continue to invest in my organization at $15,000 a year. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Joe. Comments from citizens?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Claudia Gorbman. A couple of months ago, three of us met with Chief Harding, Deputy Chief Wheeler, and Rob Gelder regarding security and freedom of speech in this complex time. We were impressed and gratified by our Paulsbow Police's attentiveness and concern for the rule of law. Now, a new issue has arisen that Pam Keely and Carolyn Zimmers have already brought up at City Council, the issue of traffic cameras in Paulsbow. I understand they're pretty new as a strategy to identify speeders, and I appreciate that. But more and more of Washington municipalities are discovering that their traffic cameras are also susceptible to use by federal immigration forces and that those cities are either taping their cameras with duct tape so they can't be, their information can't be used, or dismantling them altogether. Since the information they provide can mean detention or deportation for many people, especially our immigrant neighbors. The media recently have been full of stories about the taking of data from these cameras, whether they're flock cameras or other kinds, and whether through hacking or confidential deals between the feds and the companies that operate them. I'm hoping our police are aware of these stories and the alarms that they're raising around the state. And I hope there can be more full accountability and transparency with Paulsbow's residents about the potential dangers these cameras pose in what might be fast becoming a surveillance state. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Comments from citizens? How many times do we have to answer this question?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Pam Keely. I just want to follow up on Claudia Gorbman's comments and point out that there was a incident in Olympia a week or so ago. And they have responded by sending crisis units, crisis response units to scenes to be there to support the families and people who have been traumatized by these events. And in terms of the, and that's, that's a remedy that we hope could be worked out with our police department. I also want to point out about the cameras. We have been told that they are not flock cameras, but we haven't been told what brand cameras they are. And as flock cameras, over 80,000 of them across the country are the gold standard, you know, what vulnerabilities would an off-brand possibly have? The cameras are being, their software is being hacked by federal immigration enforcement agents. And we know that there is a traffic camera near Paulsbow Elementary School. We know that schools have not been safe from visits and, and very violent scenes from immigration enforcement people. So it's out of a sense of safety and compassion for members of our community that we would ask to have more information about the cameras, their vulnerabilities, if our police department is doing audits, to see if there have been unauthorized accessings of the data. Recently, within the last week, a judge in Washington State ruled against the use of flock cameras because of violations of privacy. So we hope you will get back to us about these concerns.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Carolyn Zimmers. I just want to say something that's associated with this. And I want to thank Chief Harding. The 23rd LD Executive Board reached out to our local police chiefs and the Sheriff Geezy to come and speak at our membership meeting tomorrow night at seven at the library, because there's great concern by many people in our community, not just the three of us, but I, I mean, it's something that has concerned so many people. And so I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Harding. He's going to be showing up to talk about some of our concerns, particularly about what happens if we do see a group of armed but unidentified people show up that are taking somebody off the street. That is going to happen sooner or later. And so Sheriff Geezy will be there and Bainbridge Island Police Chief and Bremmer Police Chief and Port Orange have been invited. I'm not, I don't know if they'll, they'll show up, but that's tomorrow night at seven for the Democratic, 23rd LD Democratic Membership Meeting in the Paulsbow Library at seven. And so you're invited as well. So, thank you.
Comments from citizens?
Hi there. I wanted to thank Joe for his introduction. I'm here for a very similar reason. My name is Melissa Tano, and I represent the Kitsap SBDC, which is part of a larger national network. And I have a little prepared statement. I want to thank you for this opportunity to express our gratitude for the ongoing support from the city of Paulsbow and our request to continue our partnership in 2026. To some stats to go down, we have this year provided individual advising to 38 small business owners and entrepreneurs in Paulsbow alone. Collectively, these businesses employ 74 people. We recently learned of a catastrophic reduction in funding and due to statewide and federal cuts. In the midst of this crisis, unfortunately, we missed the opportunity to submit our funding request to the city of Paulsbow in a more timely manner and apologize for this administrative error. And please accept our sincere apology and our gratitude for the opportunity to speak. The viability of our Kitsap Center is tenuous, and we need your support more than ever to continue serving our Paulsbow clients. Since our launch in 2019, we have assisted 148 Paulsbow businesses, including 24 new business starts. We also helped Paulsbow clients secure $5.3 million in capital inversions and create at least 53 jobs. However, our impact in the small business community in Kitsap goes far beyond this metrics. Working closely with our partners like Kita, Vibe CoWorks, Matchstick Labs, and the Best Program, local banks, and credit union, we help small businesses, owners in Paulsbow not only learn how to run successful businesses, but also connect with a thriving and supportive community. Our Kitsap Center Director Joyce Oswald is in the process of retiring. In fact, her retirement party is happening as we speak. That's going to leave me as the sole person here in Paulsbow doing what I love to do, which is helping these business owners survive and thrive in a world of big box stores and outside investors taking over our community. We are actively seeking other sources of grant and contract funding. However, we do need your support more than ever as we fight to maintain our small existence and continue serving small businesses in Kitsap. A few extra numbers, clients advised total is 148 hosts since 2019, and jobs created is 53. And there's some great feedback we've gotten from people. If you want to continue this conversation after this meeting, I really appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from citizens? Anyone else? Okay, seeing and hearing none, we're going to go on to Mayor's reports and Council comments. Mr. Newell, how are you this evening?
Good for me tonight.
Miss Livdahl?
I just want to give a shout out to Mike's Public Works crew, who helped put up the, well, they did all of it, really. They just, they just know what they're doing, and it was, it seemed very easy. But they put up the holiday lights, and it's looking kind of festive down there. Thanks, Mike.
Go ahead.
I just want to thank our community members for coming up and speaking as usual. It's always an important part of the night, and I appreciate it. And I have a, a letter tonight that was inspired by such a comment and was, you know, brought here and two months later, now it's coming up, up on the agenda. So, you know, it's a cool part of the process. No updates from me.
Mr. Stern?
Thank you, Mayor. Just an update from our tribal neighbors, neighbors. I'd like to call out the role of Councilman McVeigh in helping build a bridge with the Port Campbell Skylam. We're going to be having an informal engagement. We've had a formal engagement with the Suamish by agreement since 2005, but to reach out north to the Skylam is, I think, very welcome by both parties. And then in that regard, the Suamish, I want to give a shout out, Mayor, to Chairman Leonard Forsman. He was the first Native American ever named to the Board of Regents of the University of Washington. That was about three years ago. And this past week, he was, he became Chair of the Board of Trustees, Your Alma Mater, the University of Washington, and had the privilege of attending that. And then you heard Joe Morrison from Kita talk about our facility up on the hill, Olympic College and the Allied Health Center having to do with the healthcare crisis that you've been so involved with, with the Public Health District. Thank you for that the last five years. Our OBGYN facilities have been much threatened due to the change in funding and federal formulas, and were in danger of being closed. And the Suamish tribe stepped in and purchased those that they can continue with business as usual, and that's incredibly important. That concludes my remarks, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. Go ahead, Mr. Eckert.
Yes, so, so recently, there's some, some changes on what veteran service organizations benefit officers can do. There's actually been tightened up into who's actually able to advise veterans on their disability claims and service claims. So not everyone that used to do it from organizations can anymore. So I wanted to point out, so Kitsap County's put some information out. It's available on their Facebook page. But the official benefits counselors are going to be holding some events here upcoming on November 24th and December 8th in Silverdale, and then December 10th at Olympic College in Bremerton. So any veterans that need assistance with their disability claims at VA, processing those packages and actually having them submitted. So these are the folks that can actually submit them. Service organization officers can't necessarily submit anymore. They can just, they can advise, but they can't do the work anymore that they used to. So details for that are on the Kitsap County page. I encourage all veterans, if you need help with your disability claims, to seek out those services. So then also, some, something I wanted to share. So two weeks ago, Pualat Police pursued and apprehended a suspect who had stolen a vehicle, fled from police, crashed that vehicle, and then attempted to steal a second vehicle that had two small children inside. In May, Thurston County sheriffs were shot, shot at by a suspect they were attempting to arrest on pending felony charges. The suspect fled, was later arrested on the California-Nevada border by California police with the assistance of the FBI. November 5th, UC Berkeley, a sorority house, reported an intruder in the early morning hours. It was determined that this man had been entering, going in and out of this sorority house multiple times between the hours of 3:00 AM and 6:00 AM. He had stolen property from the house and was watching the girls sleep and shower. Sounds an awful lot like Ted Bundy to me. That man was later determined to have open felony sex case charged in a nearby county. Does anybody want to guess what technology all three of those cases, the police used to apprehend the individuals that committed those crimes? It was automated license plate readers. Now, I understand this, the fear that some folks are feeling right now. But this technology helps police solve serious crimes. Very bad people are taken off the street because of this technology. It also allows what folks have been asking for for a long time in police not chasing folks, not having hands-on interactions with folks that could allow de-escalation and calming. It's good technology. That also said, we don't have it. The cameras that we have in Paulsbow are not automated license plate readers. They are an entirely different type of technology. So regardless of what brand they are, flock is a brand. They're not that kind of technology. These cameras that we have don't do what automated license plate readers do. And again, those license plate readers have apprehended some very bad people. Like I said, that Berkeley case, if you, if you remember Ted Bundy and what happened when he escaped from jail and went out and decided he was going out in a blaze of glory, that's exactly the situation he caused. The only difference is this man didn't actually hurt anybody, yet. Again, he has open felony sex crime charges for lewd acts with a child that was pending when he went into that sorority house. So just please temper concerns with the good that's being done by police departments through the use of this technology. And remember, again, we don't have that technology here. So, thank you.
Mr. McVeigh?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things tonight. I want to thank and recognize my colleague Britt Livdahl, who is the Chair of the Beautification Committee of the Historic Downtown Paulsbow Association. She and her husband Jason, and all the volunteers who helped decorate our historic downtown on Sunday. The decorations, the holiday lights, a beautiful, Britt, thanks to you and everybody who participated. I had hoped to participate myself, but due to a bad back, I was not able to do so. But so, but it sounded like they had plenty of volunteers, so appreciate that. I also, echoing some of Mr. Eckert's remarks. You know, I, I don't know, for the record, some of the same individuals who spoke to us tonight have been raising the issue of the traffic cameras, whether it's, information is being provided to federal authorities. We have been assuring them for the last three weeks that we are not, it does not. We've issued public statements that are on the city's website. We've issued public statements on the city's police department Facebook page. They have had individual email communications with City Administrator Gelder. Chief Harding has talked at public meetings here twice the last two weeks to ally these fears, to tell them correctly what the technology is and what it is not. You are undercutting your other arguments by continuing to raise this issue. So I don't think it's in your best interest to continue doing so. I, I, thank you. I just needed to say that. And let's see, I had one more item, but I have forgotten it. So that's it. Yeah, thanks, Mayor.
And good work to the pollinator group this weekend in City Hall. If you looked out the corner, the corner looks lovely.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McVeigh. Ms. Crowe, do you have anything?
Yes, good evening. I'm sorry that I missed a couple of meetings or a meeting and a half. Had a couple of things going on. I just want to thank you for your comments on all levels. And I wanted to share some reminders. As we know, any time of the year is really good to donate, donate supplies, food, items. I just want to share that my team at my workplace, we are doing a collection of items in my organization on a team level to donate to Fishline, and just want to encourage others to do the same, regardless of it being the holiday season or not. Any time of the year, it's good to donate to Fishline to meet the needs of our neighbors. I also wanted to share that there is also a blood drive that is happening tomorrow from 10:00 to 4:00 at the library. And we oftentimes, we don't want to wait until, you know, that serious moment occurs where we are short on blood for our loved ones. So just a couple of reminders to see what you can do in support of one another. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Go ahead.
I remembered. If, thanks to the economic development professionals for coming in tonight. Appreciate you taking the time to do that. It is an important issue. If the representative from the Small Villas Business Development Center could send us a follow-up communication with some of the numbers that you rattled off. I don't remember seeing that information of late. That would be very helpful to us as we make these decisions, if we had something in writing. So would appreciate that, and thanks again for coming down.
My only comment is I want to say thank you to all involved for decorating downtown. It is the season, and it looks absolutely beautiful. I understand Public Works put up, put up, put up the, the, the lights this year. And thanks, Mike. Thanks, team. Appreciate it. Really, it looks beautiful. Traffic cameras. We've been getting a lot of heat about the traffic cameras for all the various reasons. And Mr. McVeigh is right. Mr. Eckert is right. We don't have the type of camera that's being talked about in the papers right now. But that being said, we're still getting heat because we're giving a lot of tickets. We're giving a lot of tickets because a lot of people are breaking the law. And we, when we went in, when we started investigating, putting the cameras in, I'll never forget getting the speed counts along Paulsbow Elementary. Now, if you go up to Paulsbow Elementary and up in that area and watch the kids, Paulsbow is creating walking schools. The elementary schools are being designed, and our neighborhoods are being designed, so the kids walk to school. Same thing goes on up at Vinland, where school comes and goes. There are literally hundreds of kids running around up in that school area. When we were researching the traffic cameras, we caught a car going, was it, I think it was 57, 57 miles an hour, right next to Paulsbow Elementary. 57. Now.
I just want to tap on, within one mile of the schools, your child can't catch a bus.
Yeah, I mean.
Either you drive them or they walk.
They're all walking up there. So you have yahoos, not even going to be polite about it, racing around on our roads, going 57 miles an hour while little kids are walking to school. What are we supposed to do? Okay? Our police are limited, and, well, let's go, let's go up to Bond. Let's talk about Bond and 305. There are more cars going through that intersection that, than the traffic counts of I-5 at Centrada and Chehalis. That's the volume of the traffic up there. Now, they don't live in the city of Paulsbow. They're from all over everywhere. But that's, the fact remains is we have that kind of volume. And even if we have, you know, even if we're not killing people, we have fender benders up there. They, that is policed by our police. So they go up there, they write all the reports, they figure it all out before insurance claims, all of those pieces. And it takes them out of our community and doing policing for our citizens. So, you know, it, it takes them out of service for hours. So we had to do something. And, you know, the cameras are working effectively. I don't, you know, it, this was not a revenue deal. This was, please obey the law. Do what's right. You know, don't read the red lights. Don't speed in school zones. Don't speed in park zones. Just obey the law. And then you're not going to have a problem with it. But I don't know what the traffic, the ticket volume is. I don't have, I don't have the numbers here, but we're giving a ton of tickets because people are not obeying the law. And so I pretty, feel pretty strongly about this. This was the right thing for the city to do. We had to do something and to slow people down and keep people safe. So, okay, I'm off my soapbox. Go ahead, Mr. Eckert.
Yeah, I just, I found it funny. I saw one of the complaints about parking enforcement is that our parking enforcement vehicle is driving so slow. And honestly, my response is, you mean the speed limit? Because on Front Street, you're supposed to be driving slow. The parking enforcement vehicle just happens to be going the speed that they should be going, that nobody else seems to go. Because it's, so it is a very slow speed limit on Front Street. Because as I think every single person who's ever been on Front Street has experienced, people step off the curb in front of your car regularly. One of the most nerve-wracking things to me is driving through Front Street and seeing small children running up and down on the sidewalk because you never know when one of them is going to turn and walk in. running up and down on the sidewalk because you never know when one of them is going to turn and walk into the street. And there's nothing that stops them, no physical barrier, we don't have fences. And so I'm glad if nothing else, if the parking enforcement vehicle is forcing people to drive slower through Front Street, great. Because people have been driving too fast.
That's all of my comments. I think we've gone through that. And the next is Boarding Commission reports. Is there any Boarding Commission reports this evening? Mr. Stern?
There is an ancillary one. The State Transportation Commission's been meeting. It, it, four times a year, they go around the state and meet publicly for a two-day period. And it happened to fall this week, Mayor, on Bainbridge Island. And I attended and I was surprised that my colleague Councilman Tabor attended, sitting behind me, took me by surprise. And then he mounted the podium, I call it, and actually called them out on tolling logic. And they had to respond to that as a surprise. Do you want to share your thoughts, Mr. Tabor?
Yeah, it was interesting that they hadn't presented on this. So it's, to start, it's all preliminary research that they're doing. It's not like they're, they're introducing this legislation, you know, tomorrow or next year, years from now. They're, they're looking at is, um, gas tax revenue is going down because of EVs and more efficient cars. And road costs are going up, so they're looking at replacing it with a RUC, a road usage charge. And then my two questions were, what's the operational cost per dollar taxed compared to a gas tax? Because obviously there's no operations on a gas tax. You just pay the tax at the pump versus charging it later and having to go through a whole new system with employees charging it and enforcing it, et cetera. And then my other question was, how do they account for the unfair burden on residents versus getting taxed versus outside non-residents not having to pay a gas tax if there's no tax for road use? And they, you know, had some good responses that they're looking into it and that's like a key thing to think about. But no, I wasn't, you know, I look forward to being more satisfied by an answer if that's implemented. Thanks, sir.
Okay. Any, go, Mr. Eckert?
Yeah, I just want to share with the council as a whole. The Ad Hoc Art Committee has met and is going to have a series of meetings over the next few months. We're working with the Parks Director. We're trying to come up with, in conjunction with the Pollinator Project here on, around City Hall to do something nice outside of City Hall. And so we're, we're, we're working on ideas and seeking donations through community groups and all to do something nice on the side of City Hall in conjunction. So we'll have reports to come back with as that progresses.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Any, Mr. McVeigh?
Yeah, Mayor, I should note that last week, Councilmembers Newell, Eckert, Stern and myself attended the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council Legislative Reception at Kitsap Golf and Country Club. We had very good representation of state lawmakers as well as council members and others from other jurisdictions, county commissioners, et cetera. I thought it was a good, good dialogue. A lot of really important issues. And our legislators did their best to address them. Didn't agree on everything as you wouldn't expect, but I think it was very constructive and I want to thank KRCC for organizing that.
Thank you, Mr. McVeigh. Any other Boarding Commission reports? Okay, so we're going to go on to City Administrator and Department Head comments. Mr. Gelder, how are you?
I'm well, Mayor, and good evening, Council and Madam Mayor. Just wanted to start off with, I, I left a sheet, each one of your places. But first I want to start with my thanks actually for Chief Harding and Heather Wright for continuing to host open houses for the community to answer questions and or concerns related to parking or parking enforcement specifically. And I would say that even in the early days, prior to the start of the enforcement on November first, we were hearing at those open houses sponsored by Laz concerns about what do we do in the cases of events happening downtown? And we do host a lot of events, either through the city or permitted through the city or independently, whether at the Sons of Norway, et cetera, that, and it could be a wedding, it could be Yule Fest, et cetera. But with our one, two, three and four hour time zones, the only current way that someone coming downtown for an extended period of time can avoid a parking ticket is to be able to move their vehicle. And then there are constraints around how you move your vehicle so you don't run afoul of reparking ordinances that we have on the books. So we've been struggling internally to figure out, is there an option that we can do that would be a bit of a hybrid that would help provide that safe harbor for individuals that are coming down? Whether you are the vendor that needs to get there really early and you're staying way late after everyone has left? Or you're the person who's coming down and wants to go to that event, hang around downtown, but you need a little bit more time or you want to feel more comfortable with a little bit more time? So one of the things we explored with Laz was a technology solution and they have the capacity to do it now. So what we were proposing in that is before you is basically a park and pay. It's an opportunity for individuals who would come to Paulsbow for an event and it so it wouldn't be enforced or active all the time, only when we have those events that are permitted and where this type of solution could be one of their, their needs to address their parking options or the demand for parking for that event. It could be Paulsbow Blues and Jazz is coming up and that's fairly substantial for our community as well. So how it would work is if someone would go, they would park. If the, the parking pass was available, that they, they would then use the QR code. It would then charge them a flat rate. We're proposing ten dollars. And then they would basically be able to park, not have to move their vehicle for the entirety of that day. And that would provide them an assurance that they would not go back to their car and have a citation for a sixty-dollar parking ticket. However, it also works in conjunction with the current enforcement. If you are not there for the event and you just want to go and do your, you find a parking spot and you don't want to do that pass, then you're more than welcome just to adhere to the time zone and move your car accordingly. So I'm trying to be responsive to a lot of the requests from the Sons of Norway, from other entities downtown, looking to just pilot this to see how it might work and how it actually meets that need and or the concerns of those organizations. Would love to be, and of course, Yule Fest is coming up really quick. But the technology is there for Laz to turn it on fairly rapidly. We would just need to print the signs and have those available and do a certain amount of education and outreach. But I know this is usually one of those things that would come to a workshop, but it's sort of one of those time is of the essence and would love just to get some general council direction in that regard.
Okay, Mr. Eckert?
Yeah, last, I think it was last time or time before, you mentioned a concern with, like, workers, like the HVAC system is being worked on. Could we use a similar like this for that type of thing? And then, so if it's a contractor, they would be able to track their costs because they're using the system and, you know, with, with whoever's hired them and all. But could we, you said, specifically this is special events, but would you envision this also being available?
It could be a solution for that type of scenario, but we have not worked out those. That's a little bit more complex than sort of generic event parking because a contractor, we'd have to figure out who controls the QR code and that type of thing. So it's not just widely distributed and or changed at every time. So there's more details to work on of that one.
Okay, Mr. Stern and then Ms. Lifdahl.
Thank you, Rob, for an innovative approach. Before I address this, when might the council get a report preliminary on the capacities that are being created by the employees vacating the central parking? None of this was intended for a revenue model. It was intended to create parking capacity. So the feedback on that, not trying to put you on the spot tonight, the sooner the better, even if it's preliminary data, because the, the object was capacity.
Sure. And I think it's probably going to take at least a couple of months of experience. The first one being the warning month. And there's been a lot of education, probably more than anything else occurring and making sure that everyone that is an employee that needs to shift their, their parking practices are registered in the system so that it's working effectively. Because once they're all registered, then we'll have better data as to where the employees, the magnitude of employees and where they are actually parked.
Great.
So it's, I would give it at least three months to have a good level of data.
Great. And so I, I support an innovative approach like this, Mayor. We need to act pretty quickly because of events that are pending. As is broadly known, I don't support paid parking, but I'm a big fan of parking enforcement for the reason of creating capacity. So in that regard, this is a good approach. It's better than declaring a holiday when there isn't a holiday and suspending all the rules. So I like that. I'm not a big fan of the ten-dollar rate. I prefer to keep it in single digits. It sounds like a revenue raiser when what, what we're trying to do is respect parking rules. So I'd be more comfortable with something around five dollars for that blanket rate. But otherwise, this is a great approach in a situation we need to deal with in short order.
Can't, it won't pencil it all at five dollars. Ms. Lifdahl and then Mr. McVeigh.
I experienced fairly firsthand the challenge of the time limits and volunteering. My husband and I volunteered for the Film Fest and while Film Fest was technically held before enforcement began, there was a little bit of ambiguity around that and the signage was up. And so to be on the safe side, they wanted volunteers for the Film Fest to follow the rules for parking. So for the organizers prepping for that, they found out that the port parking is, is a full day pass for ten dollars. So I think, I think personally that this price point is, is fair and evidently in line with what the port is charging for, for a full day in their, in their lot on Jensen. So that's, that's what Paulsbow Film Fest, many of the volunteers did was go up and park at the port and pay, pay ten bucks. So I, I support this approach as well.
Mr. McVeigh?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I support trying this. I also have been approached by a lot of people related to events and concerned about people not being able to park long enough with the current limits we have. And so I, I do think this is an innovative approach worth trying. I guess my suggestions would be, I think it's going to be important that the organizers of the events help us with the publicity for this. They may also want to have a couple of volunteers out in Anderson Parkway to help some senior citizens who may have some problems initially with the technology that could be possible. So I think, you know, if it's, for instance, Sons of Norway and Yule Fest, maybe they could station somebody right inside the door of Sons of Norway who might be available to come out and help people use the technology. I think obviously most people, I think, will be able to get it, but they're, you know, it can be challenging for some folks sometimes. And I, I think the ten dollars is a fair price point. I, I think at five dollars, we're going to, you know, the idea is to create capacity for the event. If it's only five dollars a day, you're going to have an awful lot of people wanting to take advantage of this, I think, and not move their cars who aren't going to the event. And I think you would undercut the Marine Science Center and some of the other people who are charging three dollars an hour down there to park. So I think the ten dollars, I think a lot of thought was put into that and I think it's a good price to start.
Okay, so Rob, what, what would you like from the council? I'm hearing a basic agreement with this. Do we need to do a formal motion or can you just move forward with it?
I think that's adequate to move forward with and then we will, we will put everything in motion and definitely let you know. We should have, and I will ask and partner with the, the Sons specifically around Yule Fest to get some feedback from them as to just sort of how it worked.
Okay.
Not only from their event attendees, but their volunteers as well.
All right, so we're going to move forward. Is, are you shoot? Well, Pam, go ahead, go ahead.
So do I understand how this works with the day pass, like, okay, I'm just a real event that occurred, it got rained out. So you pay for your day pass and you, you are not going to stay in the area. There's going to be a clarity and understanding that there's not going to be a refund, correct?
Correct. If you don't pay until you've actually parked and secured your parking spot, if for whatever reason that event has suddenly been canceled, yeah, there would not necessarily be a refund or a mechanism to do that.
So you, so you want to get this turned on before Yule Fest? Is that the idea? Yeah. I think that's, I think it's very wise. I think it's very wise. Okay, so I'm hearing tacit agreement. Okay?
Okay.
All right.
And then we will.
Go forward in peace. Go.
Provide you feedback. The only other thing that I would offer is just a reminder to the community that with Thanksgiving coming up next week, the, the city does observe the Thanksgiving holiday and the day after. So if you were looking to have services here at City Hall, those, we will be closed. So thank you.
Department Heads, who's up? Who's next?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council, community members. Michael. Great. Pretty quick photos. This time I have it preloaded. So here we go. Speaking, I want to give a big shout out and a thank you to, full screen. There we go. Councilmember Eckert, who came out to volunteer for this Saturday's Pollinator planting right here at City Hall, which was fabulous, a lot of volunteers, good misty northwest weather. And then also a big thank you to Councilmember Tabor, who came down with his lovely family and stopped by and we tried to get them all to plant and they had other plans, but thank you for supporting that. And to Public Works for helping clear some of the sites. So we have a lot more native species. This is a first, one of the first areas that we're planting in our downtown corridor to really establish the habitat for pollinators to build pollinator corridors. So you can see a couple of the photos here of, we had a variety of different volunteers and groups from environmental coalitions to the Paulsbow Garden Club Rotary. We had, oh, shoot, I'm, I know I'm missing some on this. We had our Park and Rec Commissioners here as well. Leos came. They were awesome. So we had youth engagement. It was, that's all the photos, like I promised. So it was, it was just wonderful. If you have a chance, go take a look. It'll fill in and start blooming in June is what we're thinking. And then Michael had, you want to do an update too?
Share this thing.
Sure.
So I just want to give everybody an update on where's the desktop there. Desktop. I got it right here.
You got it?
So update on the park, waterfront park work going on?
This. This is working. This is working. It's just technology, everybody. We're all good.
My apologies. I thought I had this thing figured out. So down in Havin Bay, the, the trees that everybody was so worried about dying over the summer, we transplanted them into waterfront park today, pulled them out. So we had new trees planted in there.
Can I just say something? You literally read my mind. I had this idea and then I thought, no, Mike will never. Can't believe this.
Yeah, yeah, the tree board and arborists and every, so yeah, it went slick. We, we didn't, we were going to be happy if we got two of them done today. We got all four pulled and planted, so that's good. And then the next thing that I wanted to show you, if you get me back to the desktop there.
Let me just navigate.
Yeah, you navigate.
This one? Okay, okay, okay. Here, you talk.
So we, I didn't, I haven't taken pictures to show what we're doing down at the park yet, but if anybody's been down there, they can kind of see. This is going to be the new art. It's going to go in the middle of the picnic area. So we, we have a ten-foot circle in the middle of that picnic area and it's going to be this big metal maple tree set right down in the center. It got delivered to the Public Works today. Next week's kind of a short week, so the week after that, we'll pour that concrete and set that in place and be just about done with all the work down at the park. So it's looking good down there. And that's my update.
And, and the tree board has select, so thank you, Mike and Public Works. Tree board has selected a variety of different native species that will be planted around. Once those trees go in, then the, the P3, the Paulsbow Pollinator Program will start populating. So it's, it's moving along really nicely down at Waterfront Park. Three other short updates. We still have, we have openings for the Park and Rec Commission. The last meeting of the year was just held last evening and Commissioners had a robust discussion of which skillsets would be really valuable to have on the commission to help round out the experience. And so if you know anybody who has young children, that's a really great lens on this. Someone who has maybe in a leadership position with youth sports because of the perk that's coming online as well, they can provide that. Someone who is ideally maybe a young adult who's over eighteen, who's affiliated with Olympic College, our partners over there could be a really great potential and trails experience as well. So if you know of anybody like that, please connect them. These, these positions will be open starting January first.
Jeff, are these all city resident positions?
Thank you, Mayor Alex Stern. That is, there are. Thank you, Mayor Alex Stern. That is, there are, one is a city resident and two are non-residents. We have to live within the zip code pretty, pretty close by. So you can't live in Alabama, for instance. Nothing against Alabama. There's two other updates. Wellness Committee, we, Council had a really good question earlier in the years. We, Council wasn't receiving invites to the employee annual picnic and a couple of other gatherings. We did some digging and it turns out Council wasn't listed on the email invitations. It was outdated for whatever reason. So Council will now receive invites to the, to the quarterly larger employee gatherings. So the, the summer potluck, the employee luncheon that's coming up here in December. There's a couple of other ones that happened. So you'll see those. And my question from the Wellness Committee for Council to please weigh in on is would you also like to receive updates just for awareness, if you'd like to join, to the smaller gatherings? And those are some of the wellness walks that happen downtown, the cocoa walk, the sweets array. These are smaller little gatherings. Or would you rather just have the four big ones a year to know about?
Or would you rather not have us there?
I, I have my own lens. I like everybody. So you tell us.
It's the sardine tasting that I want an invite to.
Well, that was a private taste.
I think, I think that's what you want to send us.
I just think four is fine.
Great. Four is fine. So you'll see an invite for those four. And then the final update is we had 57 applications for the special event coordinator, 33 minimum qualifications and staff are starting to work through those. And we're hoping to have that, that individual selected and onboard in the beginning of the year.
That's really good news, Jeff. Very, very good news. Whenever you have that many people applying for a job, that means that, that's Paulsboro's reputation. Sorry, but it's true. It means it's very cool. Okay, who's next? Diane, go ahead.
It was only four. I agree. Just to let you know, the perk is on track to be advertised in January. We're very excited and Jeff and I will give you a quick update at the next department head. It's going quite well. Second thing, if you have not driven down South Viking and recently, you'll notice a big change in the fire station down there and it's actually ready to receive a C of O and have its ribbon cutting on Saturday. So I got a call from Chief Gillard this week to make sure everything, all boxes were checked and they're very excited about the ribbon cutting on Saturday. In other news, the Knoll Messford project or Knoll North, as people know it, and the intersection of Knoll Messford, they're going to be doing some more work in the intersection. So you'll see some disruption there, but Josh anticipates that that project will be complete early spring, April or May of next year, and it's going very well. That's the Languenet and Marinatha work. And finally, we do have a new wall in the Maro Manor Park. And that project has gone quickly and it's much nicer than the rock wall that we had. So that's my update.
Chief? Oh, sorry. Any questions for Diane? Okay, Chief, go ahead.
Just wanted to pass along an update. We received notification from the Office of Independent Investigations in Olympia that they have received the final external report that they needed to complete their work. That process will continue for probably another three or four weeks. Once they have completed their internal review and it's reviewed by their director, then they will forward that to our Kitsap County Prosecutor. We expect that, we're hoping that that will happen sometime in January. Once that occurs, then within a few days, we should get a report, a copy of the report that they produce and we'll be able to go from there. So we're hoping January.
And just to add on to that, if I may, I think our only caveat is that there was an incident in Port Angeles. So that could potentially impact our timeline as well.
Mr. Eckert, go ahead.
Yeah, Chief, the, the other report or the other investigation that we had, I think it was support Townsend or Port Angeles?
Port Angeles.
Yeah. Is that progressing as well?
It is progressing. Some of what they need is in the report that the OII will release. So we're waiting for that, our copy of that, so that Port Angeles can access it.
Any questions for the chief? Okay. Seeing none. Okay. Any other department head comments? I see Heather shaking her head now. Okay. Thank you all very much, very much. Who, what?
Do you have for the fire station ribbon cutting? I know I said I was going to go. Are we good for core purposes for that?
Yeah, I only have yourself and Councilmember Stern so far.
Okay.
I'm, should be attending, but I'll try. Okay, so we're moving on to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the City Council for reading and study and are considered to be routine. And this is items eight A through F, and I entertain a motion.
And a mayor moved to approve consent agenda items A through F.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or conversations? Mr. Newell?
Noel, aye.
Lifdahl, aye.
Tabor, aye.
Stern, aye.
Eckert, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Crowe, aye.
Thank you, Council. Now on to the business agenda. The first item is a public hearing, ordinance number 202519. It's the 2025 Critical Area Ordinance Update Phase One, and this is Nicole.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have a presentation for you because your workshop was two weeks ago, but just a quick summary. This is, as the mayor said, the public hearing for the 2025 Critical Areas Ordinance Update. This is the last piece, like I mentioned two weeks ago, of the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update. And it's required by the Growth Management Act that we update the Critical Areas Ordinance within a year of our Comprehensive Plan Update. Again, the critical areas include wetlands, streams, aquifer recharge, geotechnical areas, and flood plains. The Planning Commission reviewed it and had a public hearing on October 7th and recommended approval to City Council. You had a workshop on November 5th and we're here tonight for the public hearing. I sent out the staff report and the proposed amendments last week or two weeks ago almost now. And I haven't received any comments from any of the council members and happy to entertain any questions that you may have. But again, it's a public hearing, so.
Okay.
That's it for staff presentation.
Okay, so that is the staff presentation. And so this is a public hearing, so I am going to open the public hearing at 5:57. The public hearing is now open. This is a public hearing regarding the adoption of the ordinance number 202519, the Critical Area Ordinance Update. Is there any public comment? If you have public comment, you step to the podium and I have five minutes. Public comment for the critical area ordinance. Last call. Any public comment for the Critical Area Ordinance Update? Seeing and hearing none, I am closing the public hearing at 5:58. Council, questions? Mr. Stern?
Thank you, Mayor. All in favor of this great work? It's something we have to do periodically per state code. I, I would just ask of the city administrator in the Planning and Economic Development Department in the coming year, without presuming on your schedule, resources and staffing demands, at some point, if there's adequate bandwidth, if I may call that, to once again review if we can better reconcile DNR on tree and brush regulations that allow for non-interference, whereas at the same time it calls for public access. And many of our residents, they rely on our parks for direct access to the water. Nelson Park being a good example, that overgrowth is going to take place pretty quickly. If we could reconcile that, it may be impossible to because of the way the codes are contradictory. But if we could explore that, city administrator or staff, without presuming on workload, if there were an adequate window in the coming year or two. Thank you.
Mr. McVeigh?
Nicole, thanks to you and our planning department for your good work on this. It's, yeah, we, we had a pretty deep dive into it last time around. I appreciated seeing the strike through version. That's always quite helpful to me. I did not see any issues here. Mayor, did you want to raise the one issue you were raising before the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. So I, I am in favor and plan to vote in the affirmative.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just had one question. You would, with the map that you had briefed last time, it seemed like the most impacted area is pretty much going to be 305 Polesville Village area. You had indicated last time, you didn't really get a lot of feedback from the community on it. Just wanted to make sure. Since then, have you gotten any additional feedback, particularly from that area?
No, we haven't had a lot of, of inquiries in general about the update. We've had a few folks here and there ask, but once we kind of inform them of the rules and the existing non-conformity rules, if they've already got paid parking lots and things like that, they tend to go, okay, that doesn't seem too difficult.
Okay. See, that, I mean, just, I don't want to do anything that would discourage any future improvement redevelopment of Polesville Village because I think that, I think we all kind of agree that 305 is a bit of the future and we want that area to grow. So I, I think as long as we're not doing anything to stifle that, at least that they can work around changes, then I'm all for it.
Yeah, there's, there's always a path forward. The path might just be a little more complicated now, but there's always a path forward.
I had one question, Nicole. Of course, I was looking, looking at the building setbacks that have been reduced for the riparian, the RMZ zones. It looks like you're increasing the buffers, but then you're decreasing the setbacks. Is, is that, is that what's going on? Can you explain to me why you're doing that? Why that's correct?
So the buffers are all being increased based on best available science. So it'll be a minimum of 100 feet, including areas like Polesville Village, which is currently 50-foot buffer. So that's the buffer from the center line of the stream. We also have a building setback that extends from the end of that buffer for another, currently for another 25 feet. And that's so there can be construction within that 25 foot in order to not impact the buffer during construction. And then you could place things like stairways and flat patios within that because they're not necessarily considered very permanent structures. But because of the increase in the buffer requirement, we felt it was reasonable to decrease that building setback to 15 feet. So it still creates a little additional area without being an additional burden on property owners, hopefully.
So you increased the buffer, but you reduced the setback?
The building setback, yeah.
Okay, but even with that map, you're still increasing the area from.
It's still a net increase. Yeah.
Okay. I got it. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Move to approve ordinance number 202519 and ordinance of the City of Paulsboro, Washington, amending sections of the City of Paulsboro Municipal Code, Chapter 16 dot 20, affirming completion of Paulsboro's periodic review and update is needed of its comprehensive plan and development regulations in compliance with RCW 36.70A point 130, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Second.
Okay, we have a very long motion and second on the table. This is the Critical Area Ordinance. It's a very important document. It is what protects our wetlands and streams in our community from development. So any further questions about regarding this? Any further questions for Nicole? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Newell?
Newell, aye.
Lifdahl, aye.
Tabor, aye.
Stern, aye.
Eckert, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Oh, aye. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you again for all your work. Appreciate it.
So now.
You yours.
And you yours, true. Now we're moving on to item E, which is a public hearing for ordinance number 202520. And this is solid weight, solid waste rate increase and Paulsboro Municipal Code amendments. And this is Diane.
Good evening, Council. I'd like to provide a little context and then I believe we have a public hearing on, on this tonight. So the last rate increase that we've had for solid waste was in 2018 with the exception, exception of CPI or Consumer Price Index adjustments that happen annually. So it's been a number of years since we've had a solid waste increase. In August of this year, we had a full presentation as a result of the financial analysis performed by Financial Consultant Services Group. And they recommended a rate increase. They recommended two options. One was to move ahead with 25% in year one and the other option was at 11 and a half percent over a three-year period. City Council and staff had a workshop and discussion about that and it was determined that it is not most cost-effective for the City of Paulsboro to provide those services. And there was a resolution issued authorizing staff to look at outsourcing solid waste. We're in the process of doing that. We anticipate that that process will take at least a year before we have a new contractor onboard. And in order to have a, maintain our standard of reserves in solid waste, we do need to raise rates. So this rate increase is something that's necessary to do that. And it has been recommended by our Financial Consultant Services Group. So I just wanted to refresh everyone's memory because August seems like a long time. Time flies. And I do have that full presentation if there's some questions and you want me to show it. But otherwise, I'm not planning on a presentation tonight.
All right. This is a public hearing, once again, regarding ordinance number 202520 regarding solid rate, solid waste rate increases. And so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at 6:06 and call for public comments. If you have any public comments regarding the rate increases for our solid waste division, please step to the podium and you have five minutes. Any public comments? Any public comments? Okay, I am not seeing and hearing any public comments. So I am going to close the public hearing at 6:07. Council, questions? Mr. Stern?
Thank you, Mayor. Diane, one of the reasons we looked at the possibility of outsourcing, privatizing the solid waste was in comparison to the other jurisdictions that offer these services where we're not inexpensive, let me put it that way. It could be up to a year, it could be two years before that outsourcing, if we take those steps, takes place. So two questions. One of the drivers was our relative expense and now we're going to go up further, which exacerbates that comparison. At the same time, the reserves such that they're not adequate to get us through that, I'm going to call it a holding period, or are, you found them to be insufficient?
That's correct. And where we get measured by our Finance Director, Assistant City Administrator is making sure that we have adequate operating reserves and we would deplete our operating reserves by 2027 if we continued to operate where we're at.
And a last question, if I could, Mayor, of Diane. And that is in increasing these rates now, do we necessarily increase the cost of acquisition to a outside party that they would be taking it over at a higher level? And I should clarify, the council has a responsibility to the city primarily, but it wears a second hat, as we're all aware, of representing the city's ratepayers. And that can be a different function than the city itself. So I'm trying to speak for those ratepayers and try to hold the line and see if we can't get across the goal line with as minimal an impact as possible. So if you could address that larger concern, Diane?
Absolutely. We believe that the rates will come down with an outside provider because they are more efficient. They're in the business of providing solid waste, whereas our city is in the business of taking care of the city, the water, the sewer, the storm, the roads and solid waste. They are able to purchase fleets for garbage delivery. They're also able to have a higher level of technology and it's the business that they do. So the process that we go through is we solicit for bids and we have the opportunity to negotiate and find the lowest bidder that we can that can provide the quality of reliable service that our citizens need to have. So we do see that the rates would come back down after we outsource.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want, and it's important that's on the record for the ratepayers separate from the city. So thank you for that.
Any further comments? Mr. Eckert?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you, Diane, for, you know, yeah, like you said, back in August, I mean, we just, this was sort of a, it started almost as an aside in a conversation on something else. And we've, we've progressed very far in a short period of time, I think. So thank, and. And we've, we've progressed very far in a short period of time, I think. So thank, and, and from my own, just for speaking for myself, from a point of complete ignorance on the topic to feeling very comfortable with where we, where we are. So thank you for all the work that you, you and your department has done, uh, if nothing else, on just the due diligence, informing us and educating me.
Go ahead, Doug.
Uh, just, uh, to tack on to Councilmember, uh, Eckert. The energy you put in to informing us early on is paying off by us being ready to, you know, move forward now, so. So well done. I think that was a really good move on your part, and I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Tabor.
I move to approve ordinance number two thousand twenty-five dash twenty, an ordinance of the City of Palsbo, Washington, amending Palsbo Municipal Code PMC Chapters three dot twelve dot zero nine zero, in order to adjust solid waste rates, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further questions regarding this? Mr. Eckert?
Yeah, it's not a question, but just discussion. We see that, uh, uh, as Ed said, we're already, you, you're delicate, and not inexpensive. We're expensive. And we're going higher. Um, this is the same kind of idea I alluded to when we were talking about proprietizes. You know, all these increases are just hitting our citizens harder and harder. Um, that said, you know, this is, this is what we saw was coming, even if we're going to outsource, we have to be responsible to the ratepayers, to the utility, um, because we don't know what will happen in the next two years. And the last thing we want to do is try to cut it right to the bone, because we think we're going to outsource, and then maybe the situation changes, and now we have to go with that much higher rate, you know, rate increase later, which could hurt people even more, so, um, I, as much as I don't want to increase it now, and I'd rather try to get to the outsource and get people a cheaper rate, I think the responsible thing to do is do the smaller increase now, and you know, we pursue the path that Diane has laid out for us, which I think is the responsible thing to do for, for the utility and for the ratepayers and, and I won't say hope for the best, because we're not, hope is not planned, and we're planning, so. Continue with due diligence.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Any further conversation regarding this? We have a motion and second on the table. Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Newell.
Newell, aye.
Lived aye.
Tabor, aye.
Stern, aye. Eckert, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Oh, aye. Thank you, Council.
Uh, now on to, uh, confirmation of the mayoral appointment of Palspo Municipal Court Judge for the four-year term, and this is, uh, uh, Administrator Gilder.
Good evening, Councilmembers. The, the employment contract before you for concurrence this evening is for the four-year mayoral appointment to the Palspo Municipal Court Judge. As you will recall, earlier this year, an appointment was made to complete the unexpired term vacated by Judge Holman. Uh, given we have a change in executive leadership in January, and that this appointment is for a four, new four-year term, uh, it was decided to conduct a new appointment process. Uh, the city received three applications, and we conducted interviews of the three candidates on October twenty-eighth. Uh, we had two interview panels, one of which included Councilmembers Tabor and Stern. Uh, following the results of the general election, Mayor-elect Stern and I were present for follow-up interviews of the top two candidates. Uh, Mayor Erickson and Mayor-elect Stern concurred on the recommendation before you, and the employment contract was crafted. The term will begin on January first of twenty twenty-six and will conclude on December thirty-first of twenty twenty-nine. Uh, in per state RCW, it requires the appointment be made by December first of the year preceding the new term, hence it is before you this evening.
Okay, so new municipal judge. Sir, would you like to come up and say a few words? Municipal, uh, but soon to be almost immediately confirmed, our municipal judge?
Well, thanks. I would like to say a very brief, uh, few words, uh, and those are thank you to the mayor, mayor-elect, to the administrator, and all the council members. Um, I look forward to serving, uh, with integrity and, uh, with compassion for all those that come before the court. I'm very excited about this, and, uh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Judge Davy?
Yeah, thank you.
Perfect. Okay. Any further questions or comments? Mr. McVeigh?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Gilder for, uh, the background on the, uh, interview process. Uh, it sounds quite thorough. Um, I did have a chance to review Mr. Uh, Davies' application, uh, his, uh, letter of interest. Um, and, uh, was quite impressed with his background, uh, numbers of years in serving as a, uh, judge pro temp and other um, jurisdictions. Um, and, uh, seems, uh, to me like he has all the right tools and assets that we would be looking for in a new municipal court judge, so I support the appointment.
Mr. Stern?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Having been deeply involved in this process, uh, I'll continue to own it, and I'm going to move it forward, and then it'll be the opportunity for any other question, once it's on the table. So Madam Mayor, I move to confirm the mayoral appointment of the Palspo Municipal Court Judge for a four-year term beginning January the first, twenty twenty-six, and ending on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I think you meant, yeah, twenty, motion and a second. Sorry, a little rumbly tonight, a long day. Um, any further questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none.
Newell, aye.
Lived aye.
Tabor, aye.
Stern, aye. Eckert, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Oh, aye. And once again, welcome aboard, Judge.
Now.
We should recognize and thank the court staff for being here tonight, too, after hours. Thank you so much. Good to see you all.
And, and thank Judge McKinnon for her service in the interim.
Now we are going to move on to the twenty twenty-five pavement preservation scrub seal project acceptance, and this is Mr. Lund.
We got it. We happy. So good evening, Council, Mayor Council. Um, we're here to talk about the twenty twenty-five, uh, scrub seal project we did up, uh, Cullard, Cullard Heights, uh, Forest Rock, that area. Um, you guys remember about, uh, twenty seventeen? We started doing neighborhood streets and, and, uh, so this is the next in the list of ongoing streets that we did, and it was a very good project this year. Uh, so this is, we did, um, all of Forest Rock, all of the divisions in Forest Rock, Palspo Gardens, Cullard Heights, um, basically two hundred and seventy-eight homes. It was, it was quite a, quite a lot. So I think the largest project that we've done so far, as far as our neighborhood streets. And with all those homes, the project went very, very smooth. We only had maybe a handful of complaints, so we're very happy with it. So this is just some before pictures, what the roads kind of look like up there. They were pretty old. They're, you know, thirty-plus years old and haven't had any maintenance on them. That's, uh, the scrub seal, chip seal going down. And the road looks like when she's all done, so. It's not new pavement, but it definitely is a lot better than what it was, and, and putting the fog seal over top really helps, helps everything, helps tie everything together, so you don't get the loose rocks running around and, and stuff like that, so it's really, it's really good. Uh, this kind of just shows, so we have a new, uh, software, um, called Biolytics that does PCI score, pavement condition index scoring. And, uh, the lower the number, the, the worse the, the, uh, condition of the roadway is. So on the left, um, was the pavement condition in the area here. Green is good. Red, not so good. You can see the areas over here was red, lots of red, lots of red, lots of red. So after the project, we drove through with our software again, and we upped our scores all and through the green here, so we did, you know, did a lot of good, good work there with that. The contractor was Do Little Construction. We did about two point one three miles of road. Uh, the original contract amount, just over two hundred and forty-two thousand. We had one change order. We added a section of Cullard to it, uh, from the cemetery on down to Forest Rock, because that, that, uh, had not been touched. Final contract amount, uh, was two hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, we had a, a project budget of over five hundred thousand. Uh, Do Little came in at two sixty-six. The second bidder, if you all remember, was about a hundred thousand dollars more than them, so they came in quite a bit lower. Um, it's great. Uh, product, uh, completed and done, um, for two hundred and eighty-three thousand, two hundred and thirteen dollars, well under budget, and it was actually a very good project. I was very happy with the work that Do Little did for us, and, you know, we see some more of that in the future. And any questions?
Any questions for Mike? Great project, Mike. I mean, they look beautiful, absolutely beautiful. Go ahead, Pam.
Um, I'm keenly interested in the software you use to, um, assess, you know, the, the, the repairs. Um, does that help to, um, manage, uh, the time of team members? Does it kind of help to minimize, uh, some of the time that you might have to put to evaluate something like that? I know this might be a little bit off subject, but I, I am very much.
It, it's actually, it's really good. So when, when, when you, you have a, uh, PCI score, generally you would have like an engineering firm come out and, you know, charge you a hundred thousand dollars, go through the town, look at the town, and give you a scoring back. We found this at a conference I went to a few years ago, Biolytics, and they're taken by storm. Everybody's, you know, talking about this new technology that's going on, and it's, it's AI-based. So basically, instead of having, you know, somebody go out and physically score and physically do the roads, it's AI-based. We put a camera, or put a, basically a smartphone in our window, drive the streets. It, it scores the streets as, as it goes. Within a couple of days, we, it's all cloud-based. We pull it up, see what our reports are, and then when we have a project like this, drive it after, afterwards, within a few days, tells us the difference, tells us how we're doing, shows us how we can start planning forward for, for new stuff. It clicks on, uh, we can do, uh, a lot of project planning, and I'll show a little bit of this in a couple of weeks when, uh, Josh Raines and I are going to be talking about some more street stuff. Um, so, uh, it's, it was, it was very good.
That's amazing, because I think it will, it will clearly, um, you know, enhance the value of your workers, and nobody's going to be out of the job because of it. I mean, it's a tool that you're going to use to, um, you know, just, you know, maintain time management, obviously, money. Um, I, I, I admit, I, 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 that really piques my interest, but pretty cool.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still just, we've had it for, oh, not quite a year yet, maybe, maybe eight months, and I'm still learning the nuances on it. I don't, I don't get to play on it that much. You know, it's just one of the, one of the tools in the toolbox. We don't get to play on it as much, but it does that. It does, uh, street sign inventory. It'll drive by and, and inventory our street signs and puts them right on the map and tells you whether they, they have tree trimming, whether they need to be cleaned. It's pretty slick. Pretty slick.
Okay, Mr. Stern?
Thank you, Mayor. In addition to the AI software, there's even a more intensive tool for surveying, and that's, I had the opportunity to go door-to-door in any number of neighborhoods, and I know Diane and Mike can attest to me making inquiry as I knocked on doors. And I can tell you, Mayor, the popularity of this program is second to none, and it is the number one interest point of commonality throughout the community. It's hard to explain to people whose streets are really bad that they don't qualify. It's the intermediary streets that we're trying to save. Um, and I could see where we need to add to the budget in the years ahead, where we can afford to do additional set aside. The question of course, and I, I got it down to a pretty good speech, Mike, that these streets were built by the developer. We accepted them at the time by the codes that were on the books, and some of them don't have the substrate on them that the newer codes require. So how do we eventually address the streets that are near failure?
So, I mean, a lot of, like, exactly, a lot of the old roads that we have in town were built with the old county standard of just a couple of inches of rock underneath it and two or three inches of asphalt. The only way you're ever going to fix that is to completely grind the road up and redo it. All you can do is try and preserve what you can, maybe do some, some chip seal, chip seals, you know, and, and try and, try and preserve the best you can. This is going on every city across the nation. They have, all have this problem. I was just at a, a pavement conference down in Seaside a couple of weeks ago, and that, everybody's talking about the preservation issues and, and stuff like that. One of the big pushes, they say, and is, and to get, get people like yourselves to buy into it, is, is it going to be a challenge? To preserve asphalt, you need to start right away, not wait twenty years to start doing preservation. You need to start doing preservation treatments on your asphalt that's five years old. And start keeping that asphalt tight and good, so water doesn't get in the subgrade. Once water gets into the substrate, all bets are off.
Yeah. I have Mr. Eckert. Oh, I'm sorry. Are you, are, okay, Mr. Eckert, and then Mr. McVeigh.
Um, so yeah, just now, Mike, um, yeah, well, I mentioned that before, we need to probably book in a plan for the streets that are beyond this program. Um, I was just going to say thank you for coming in under budget yet again. Um, that amount essentially is a whole nother project that this one saved, so that's great, because it, it's a whole nother set of neighborhoods that we can take care of. Um, and then, yeah, I was going to make the motion, um, move to accept the twenty twenty-five pavement preservation scrub seal project as complete.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I think Mr. McVeigh, you had a comment?
Uh, I just wanted to, I was gonna comment, follow up to Mr. Stern's remark, uh. Uh, it sounds to me like, uh, you know, you heard the technology is wonderful, but everyone wants to know when they're going to do, when we're going to do their street, right? Myself included. All right, that, that was it.
I get that phone call a lot.
Okay, so, well, and there's streets that are the goat paths, okay, that, I mean, are really, anyway. Motion and a second. Any further conversation? Seeing and hearing none. Mr. Newell?
Newell, aye.
Lived aye.
Tabor, aye.
Stern, aye. Eckert, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Pro, aye. Thank you, Council, and that ends, that ends our business, uh, uh, agenda. So we're going to take a ten-minute break, and, uh, so we'll be back at, how about six thirty-five?
That's good.
It's nine.
Okay, guys, it's uh six thirty eight. Let's let's see if we can get this uh meeting going here. Okay. Um, the first thing, are we all here? Okay. Uh, the first thing on our workshop agenda is letter uh to Washington State. Excuse me, Washington State Legislature's A Remedy for Everyone's Right Violation. And Mr. Taber brought this to us, so why don't you go ahead?
Mayor, before we start, um, counsel, because this is addressing federal officials and I am a federal employee, I'm going to recuse myself from this.
All right, so why don't you go ahead and and uh talk about what this means, Doug?
Um, yeah, I'd like to invite um a guest uh who collaborated on this, uh, Mr. Luke Garrett, um, Esquire.
Is there a question, sir?
Oh, right here, the head of the honorary seat. So um, just a quick statement from me and then uh Mr. Garrett, introduction for you. Um, you all know me. Um, this came um, two months ago in a form of a community comment and then I exchanged some emails. Um, and I was, I think, you know, skeptical. And after more meetings with Sir Garrett and a few email conversations with several lawyers I know and one from UW Law School, um. I I came over to decide that this is a good thing to send forward to our legislatures and thank you, Rob, for suggesting the letter format. That was a good idea. And um, I know our primary responsibility is to running the city well. And we work hard to make thoughtful decisions to prepare, to learn from the past, think about the future of our city. Um, and then while our day to day operations are running well, I think our residents come to us with issues and concerns outside of our jurisdictions, outside of our authority, and we, you know, sometimes are have a range of emotions from frustration to, you know, sympathetic. In a very real way, we are the closest people they have to their representative governments. And a quote from Thomas Jefferson, the government closest to the people serves the people best. And I don't like wasting resources or time. I think it's really important, the work we do. Um, and I uh brought this forward because I think this has a lot of merit and I'm uh I earnestly believe in it and Mr. Garrett here, help me along that.
Hi, um, thank you for both of these?
No.
Okay, all right. I don't know how many mics and oh, okay, uh, thank you for uh giving me a chance to talk, for considering this issue. Uh, my name is Luke Garrett. I'm not a resident of Pauls Bow, though I spent some time in Pauls Bow. I live on Bainbridge Island. I am a trial lawyer. And this was something that had sort of uh come across my radar, read a Law Review article about it. I've looked into it a bit more, uh. Some different organizations and groups are also uh considering this, but in short, you know, you've got rights, rights should have a remedy when they're violated. And there's a clear gap here with respect to remedies for violations of the federal constitution by the federal government. Not going to go into great detail, but I think it's pretty clear, and I think that Mr. Taber sort of saw that when he asked around a little bit, uh, and so there's a gap. Uh, and I will also say that this is not a partisan issue. It does not say that anything is a violation of law or should be compensated, or it doesn't. That's a whole separate thing. This is just saying if your rights are violated, uh, you should be able to uh pursue damages for that. Uh, I'll say that I'm happy to talk specifics if folks have questions about any of that, but I think that the idea of a letter uh to legislature where they can take up the specifics and, you know, ask whatever interested parties that they want to ask, that that's probably the best place to address specifics. Uh, but I will say that I've spent a fair amount of time looking into this and I believe it absolutely can be written consistent with the Constitution and federal laws. Um, it occurs to me that your an objection might here might be, this isn't your lane, why is this your business? I will say that I think that a remedy for violations of the federal constitution is absolutely in uh the interests of all of your constituents. I also don't see that there's really any cost to you folks to just ask in legislature to take the issue up. Oh, I I can't remember if I mentioned, this isn't a partisan issue. I mean, it's I mean, different people with different political affiliations may care more about certain rights than others. But this would be a, the idea would be to provide a remedy to anyone whenever any of the constitutional rights be violated. Uh, and then just on the issue of why do you take this up? Step back and just talk about the big picture really briefly here. Uh, I think that we are living in historic times, times of great change. I think that the relationship between the federal government, I mean, that may excite you, that may terrify you. I don't know what's going to shake out. But um, I think the relationship between the federal government and the states is evolving. I'm not sure where it's going to end up. I think the relationship between the three branches of the federal government are evolving. And I suspect that someday, maybe far in the future, historians are going to look back at times like this and they're going to look at things that were done by local city councils in the same way that they do for, you know, the founding, you know, seventeen seventy six or you know, however much later, thirteen years later, whatever, when the US Constitution was adopted, and the same thing for the Civil War era. And I I I think that a statement on this would, I think, reflect reasonably the interests and desires of citizens of Pauls Bow and if it were me, I think that that's something that I would like to have in the historical record, if anyone's looking back to see what I was thinking about, what I was doing. Uh, and so I don't see a huge downside, I would, or any downside, really. I'd encourage you to ask legislature to act and I'm so I've got to say, I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any, but uh, oh, I'll just note one thing, uh, my wife's a federal employee, so theoretically, I hope no one would ever sue her under this, but uh that could be an issue. All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, thank you to uh Councilmember Taber for bringing this to us and to you, Mr. Garrett, for being here tonight. Um, I I'm wondering, um, I guess two questions. Um, I I think I know the answer to the first one, but I want to be sure. Um, and you kind of alluded to it here at the end. Um, this really isn't uh, addressing violations of citizens' rights by federal employees per se. It's aimed at federal law enforcement officers. Is that correct?
Uh, I, so exactly what it would look like would be determined by the state legislature, but if it the, at least the initial idea was to have it track like forty two USC Section nineteen eighty three, which allows you to sue the state for violations of the federal constitution. It would not be limited to law enforcement officers at all, although certainly law enforcement officers would be subject to it. If I believe the way the language on the Section nineteen eighty three is written is, you know, uh, individuals acting under color of state law, so it could be or under under color of federal law. And so I'm trying to think, I mean, Section nineteen eighty three theoretically could apply to like a zoning officer, it could apply to a clerk at the county courthouse, it could apply to, I mean, any instance where someone is violating constitutional rights in the course of their duty. But so yes, it would certainly implicate law enforcement, but not exclusively.
Wouldn't be limited to that, okay. Um, and so then I have a, I guess, a comment and then one final question. Uh, my comment would be uh, I would not be comfortable moving this forward without a consultation with our city attorney about the appropriateness of it. I'm not sure if that has been done, but uh, I I would want that validation. And uh, my second question then would be, you mentioned you're from Bainbridge. Um, I'm wondering if you have approached the Bainbridge Island City Council about this matter? Or any other councils or jurisdictions, or if we're your first stop?
Uh, no, actually, this, I I sort of got roped into this. Uh, I I'd uh I'd initially raised the issue with the Kitsap County Democrats. Uh, they, I think it was like a voice vote, but it appeared to be unanimously adopted resolution calling for this. I believe uh uh, it was someone else who was in touch with that, I think had been in touch with Mr. Taber and then invited me to get involved. In addition, so uh, through that, through the Kitsap County Democrats, there's uh a request to our state representatives to take this up. I believe that the issue was also taken up, uh. I don't have, I haven't seen documentation, but I think maybe the state Democratic Party. And I've also, I'm a trial lawyer. I've brought the issue and in fact discussed it today in a meeting of the Legislation Committee of the State Trial Lawyers. So I I'm not trying to pick on you.
We're the first stop.
I
Right, right.
Well.
I mean, no other councils have weighed in.
Uh, as far as I know, I mean, there's other, I guess, community organizations have taken the thing up and have weighed in, but as far as an actual government, uh, yeah. And that wasn't, I'm not trying to pick on you guys. I got asked to to to.
I'm I'm just looking for information.
No, 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 that's fair.
I think he got drafted, is what I.
And I'm happy to be drafted, but yeah.
Thank you.
Mm hmm. Who's next?
And uh, yeah, I sent out the FAQ with, which were kind of my questions going into this. And so I kept those populated as I went to um to provide. And um, Rob, I I initially was interested in contacting the the um city attorney, but it didn't feel that necessary since it's just a letter requesting something. There's no impact to the city that I can imagine. And I checked with the UW Law Professor and he didn't think that this, even if this legislation was enacted, would have any impact on the city or implicate the city in any way.
Yeah, I I think this is more of a a policy call um by council of whether or not this would be something that you would want to sign and send to our legislative delegation. Um, I don't think that there is necessarily a legal thing and and whether or not um, the council would want to have a review of the legal arguments or the premise behind the letter, then that's that would be a different uh conversation.
I will admit one point of fear. Okay, one point of real, real concern about this. Um, okay, I said I will admit one point of fear, one point of real concern about this. Um, the city of Pauls Bow has been very fortunate to get literally tens of millions of federal dollars. We've been, we're better at it than anyone in the county. we're better at it than anyone in the county, getting federal, federal dollars. And, um, we use those federal dollars mostly for, um, our transportation infrastructure, but we've used them for other things as well. And, um, uh, my concern is, and especially in this climate, is it's kind of like we're sticking our head up. And, you know, sometimes, as my mother would say, discretion is the better part of valor. Okay. Which is if you stick your head up, you might be in a situation where you might jeopardize those funding streams and they are massive. Literally tens of millions of dollars. So I, uh, would that happen? I don't know. But especially if we were the first ones to do this, I don't know. But you're, you're talking about the, basically the guts of our transportation infrastructure program. So that means our streets. So just want to put it out there.
I appreciate you always keeping the city at the forefront.
Yeah. Want to put it out there.
I'll, I'll say, I'm sorry. I don't know if I should.
No, go ahead.
Uh, I mean, I, I can't. I'll say that, uh, to retaliate against a statement by this body on a matter of public interest and public policy, I think would be flagrantly unconstitutional. I also think that like, that's, uh, well, conceivably, look at it this way, conceivably, that could give you a, this statute could give you a right to sue for that federal constitutional violation, but, uh, but, um, I guess.
I mean, we're, we're in the land of Oz now, right?
I, I, I understand. Uh, and I mean, I can't tell you, I mean, frankly, I don't, I don't know how far down folks are looking at any of this sort of thing, but like, that's probably not a crazy thing to think. I also think that, I mean, you say we're in the land of Oz. I mean, the way you get out of the land of Oz is at some point, someone's got to say, this is crazy and we need to do something. And because if everyone keeps their head down, everyone keeps their head down and we keep going on in the land of Oz. And so I'll say that that's part of the reason why this whole thing appealed to me in the first place. Uh, so, you know, I, different people can make different calls on that, but, um, like I said, I think these are historic times and folks are going to look back and see where people lined up and that's a decision you guys need to make.
Yeah. And I think this is also just a, an opportunity for you to sign it. Like it's not a, you know, right? You guys don't, don't feel any pressure from me. I'm not, you know, not going to stop talking to you if you don't sign it. So.
Uh, we have Britt and then Doug and then, Britt, Britt and Doug.
Um, I have to, you, you put it into words. I wa, I wasn't actually sure if I should even say it, but you said it. Yeah, exactly. I'm, I'm. When you get right down to it, um, in the last almost six years that I've been here, I think I've probably said lots of stuff that could get our funding yanked if somebody was actually going to look this hard, you know, because we're in cuckoo land. So, um, I, you know, I don't know. What, how often have we been afraid of being the first or being small and, you know, insignificant and trying new things anyway? And then in trend setters or whatever. I don't know. I'll sign it.
Cool.
Mr. Newell?
Yeah, I guess it gets to um, a discussion of, um, have you considered, since this is US statute and potentially a constitutional issue, addressing this to our U, US representatives, our two senators and along with our, our congresswoman, since this seems to be a federal issue that you're, you're asking about and not a state law issue?
Uh, I think it would be totally appropriate to address it to, uh, federal elected officials as well. They absolutely, uh, could, I mean, Congress doesn't seem to be super functional and hasn't, doesn't seem to have been super functional for a while. And I, I, I'm not terribly optimistic, but I think they're absolutely a relevant audience for that. That said, I think that, I mean, from what I've looked at the historical record that you could sue the federal government for injuries like this throughout most of the course of the history. I've looked at subsequent statutes and it looks like there is, uh, exemptions for federal constitutional claims that would, you know, statutes that would otherwise bar this sort of thing. Um, so I guess absolutely address it to the federal, uh, other federal officials. That said, I think that historically this has fallen to the states to a large extent.
Who else? Go ahead, Pam.
I'm in support of it. It, I, I'll sign the letter because it is just basically making a stance. And I do understand the concern of, you know, don't draw attention to yourself, but things are happening. It is like, what, Oz, cuckoo land, the wild, wild west. That's what it feels like to me, you know? So I think that, you know, it is making a stand, a statement. And I believe that you answered it, but there's no other council in the region or Washington that has, um, done some, taken steps like this?
To my knowledge, um, no government body has been approached about this other than what, you know, various non-government organizations are directing to state legislators. Uh, and again, I wasn't trying to pick on folks, but I'm happy to come and answer questions.
I think that we can also, I mean, if there's like hesitation or something that just doesn't sit right in the pit of your stomach, you know, I, I mean, we, you know, we can, you know, sleep on it and.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so it's, I understand there's, to me, there's real concerns. So.
And just to note, I, um, I asked one of our state reps without, I was like explicitly saying, don't give me an opinion. I just want to know, have you seen anything like this? And they said, no, they hadn't. And that they were excited to learn more about it.
Uh, Mr. McDade?
I'm, I'm digging.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, speaking for myself, um, I'm not prepared to make a decision about this tonight. Uh, again, I, I would feel much, I don't want our city attorney to spend thousands of dollars researching this. I just want some confirmation that we're not going to look like fools if we move forward with it. Okay? Um, we have a reputation of the city to, I think, consider. Um, I, I will confess, uh, Mr. Garrett, I am a little concerned. Um, I, I've heard that it's a nonpartisan issue, but now I've since heard that it came out of the Kitsap, uh, Democratic Party. Um, we're, we're seem to be talking a good deal about, um, um, what's, what's happening, uh, in the White House. Um, and, uh, I, I, I'm not, I'm concerned that it would be viewed uh, as, uh, more of a partisan issue than a nonpartisan issue. This council has a long history of avoiding partisan issues. We, we hold nonpartisan offices and I take that responsibility very seriously. So I would need to think about this.
I'll just say, uh, I mean, uh, my time's not unlimited, but I'm happy to, uh, continue conversation offline with folks. Um, I'll say that I could, you know, I'll confess that my interests frankly are related to actions, uh, by the current federal government. But I could absolutely imagine something exactly like this being pushed, for example, under President Obama by folks who are concerned about their Second Amendment rights. And it would protect those folks just as well as it would anyone else. Uh, and I'll note that, I mean, I, I don't know to what extent it would actually make a difference, but, um, the actual, the initial Law Review article I came across was written by, at the time, it was two Harvard Law School students. I thought, you know, that doesn't seem super promising. Uh, and so I looked them up. One of them is currently clerking for Chief Justice John Roberts, uh, which I'm assuming this was on his resume and he probably respects the opinion of this guy. I don't expect that's going to carry the day or mean anything about the validity or anything like that. But I think it suggests that this is an issue that has sort of broad partisan appeal. And not to downplay the, uh, the sort of the merits of this. I mean, the other main scholar, the person who's written about this the most is one of the most cited scholars by the US Supreme Court during our lifetime. So, it's not totally out of left field.
So why don't we do this? We'll shoot this letter off to our city attorney and see what she has to say about it. And then we can have a additional conversation after she gives her opinion and then we can go from there.
Great.
We do get a lot of federal dollars and I'm nervous about doing anything that would put our head up, like put our hand up. On the other hand, you know, um, I understand that, um, you know, I'm, I'm an old person. I remember Richard Nixon. Okay. I remember Johnson. I remember the draft. I remember all of those things many years ago where people were really abused by the federal government and very, I remember Kent State where they shot students. Okay. I remember all those things. So I, you know, you know, I, I have no love for some of the federal stuff that's going on right now. And I think we do need to push back. But I think we also need to use discretion. How's that sound?
Well, thank you all for your time and consideration. So the, the takeaway is that this would go to the city attorney, just to make sure that, you know, it doesn't negatively impact the city. And then one more discussion.
Yeah.
And, um, I'll just say, I'm also vehemently anti-partisan before I was on council and, uh, there was another, it was a concern of mine. And thank you guys for taking the time to read this.
Oh, I was just going to say, by all means, every one of you should make your own judgment. City attorneys should make their own judgment. If, if it can save you dollars, things like that, I encourage a city attorney to reach out to me. I can pass along materials that just to try to short circuit some of that time. But thank you folks for handing me out and considering this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Now we have the Rotary Peace Pole. And this is Jeff and guests.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. We're just going to load this and then we'll do introductions here. Just a moment. Go. Almost there. All right. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council and community members. I am pleased to introduce, uh, Lori Cameron and Andre, how do I, the Dombrowski, the, the Dombrowski from the Pauls Bow Rotary Club. They're here to do a presentation on council's behalf from a, a previous meeting, asking for some information about a Rotary Peace Pole presentation for potential installation at Waterfront Park. Uh, and they're here to share what their idea is with council.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. And thank you, Mayor Erickson, Mayor-elect Stern and all the council members. Thank you for your time. And I wanted to start tonight by, um, apologizing. We, we've been working on this with Parks and Rec for quite a while since, in developing the concept and the idea and the location and the vendors and all of that. And, um, so please forgive the oversight for not bringing it to council sooner. And we really appreciate the opportunity to share it tonight. So just the regular buttons. All right. So a brief history, for those of you that are not familiar with peace polls. In Japan in nineteen fifty-five, Masahisa Goy um, saw the devastation that happened when we dropped the bombs on them. And at one point he was inspired to spread a message of peace. And the message was, may peace prevail on earth. And that started popping up on poles, similar to the one in the picture, all over Japan. And since nineteen fifty-five, there's been over two hundred and fifty thousand peace polls registered worldwide. And there's actually on one of the websites, there's an interactive, uh, world map, like Google Maps, that shows where all the peace polls are. And then in late twenty twenty-four, as I was kind of thinking about what kind of difference can, can I make? I looked at peace polls and I thought, well, we can do that here. So I created a committee with the Pauls Bow Rotary Club with Andre. Thank you very much for joining me on this. And we've been doing a lot of research and work and talking about it. And what we've come up with at this point is as a gift to the city of Pauls Bow, this is a rendering where we are so far on it, what it'll look like. Peace polls typically have, um, languages. They're either four languages or eight, or sometimes twelve, sometimes sixteen. And the ones that we have chosen are English, Japanese, Spanish, Norwegian, the Shuji, Tagalog, Swedish, Finnish and a Braille plaque as well. There'll be an eight by eight cedar pole with metal pla, metal plaques and the, the pole is curing with our woodworker on Bainbridge Island because we've decided to, we could order these pretty easily and just have it done and up from a couple of different peace pole makers around the country. And what we decided is we want to make this, um, locally grown. So we've been looking at all local vendors. So our woodworker is on Bainbridge. The metal plaques will be done by, um, West Sound Reaper Graphics here in Pauls Bow. Um, custom built locally. And originally we had thought, because we'd, after we talked to you, Mayor Erickson, about some different possible locations, we were looking at the north end of American Legion Park. And then Jeff came along and, and said that his, his city planning committee said, you know, there's a spot, there's a little triangle right at the south end of Waterfront Park, right at the marina entrance. So we started looking at that and what that might look like. And now it looks very different than it did when we started this whole thing. So, um, if that is, if this is, if we can create an agreement with the city and that location is still approved by Parks and Rec and Public Works, then, um, we'll still do that. If there's another location as they are renovating that the city suggests, then we are certainly flexible to be able to work with them on that as well. Um, here's the good news. We're not asking for a penny from the city. So no burden on resources. This is something that will be the, the construction, the installation, the ongoing maintenance, any repairs will all be covered by Pauls Bow Rotary Club. Um, we're looking at the possibility of including different civic organizations, scout groups, American Legion, Sons of Norway, schools, anyone else that might want to help maintain it. We're also looking at a webpage on the club website that will have links, um, to uh, different, um, peace poll information as well as information around the city, invitation to come visit, maybe even a guest book. We're not quite sure how that might work, but to find out. Um, I will have a QR code on it as well that will link to the website. Um, and what I would like personally is for this to be the, the first of many, that this really is the showcase. And I would like to see peace polls, maybe not quite this complex, because this is the concrete plant is sixteen by sixteen and then buried into the ground. The pole is planted on top of it. And I said, it's an eight by eight cedar pole and probably eight to nine feet tall. He would like nine and a half to 10, but I think we're stuck with eight or nine feet on here, but still pretty significant and really want to make it a showcase for the city. Um, but the first ones that, that I showed you in the last slide, the white ones that are just kind of really easy to order and relatively inexpensive. I would love to see peace polls at every single school, every single, I don't know, city building, businesses everywhere in Pauls Bow. Because I would really like Pauls Bow to join this. It's a global movement. And I would like to put Pauls Bow on the peace poll map. And, you know, there's some in Yemen, the Dalai Lama, the Himalayas, the, actually there's, I have a picture of one, a peace poll right at the, um, at one end of the river Koi. Um, and we have, um, Jeff has sent us the, kind of the revised agreement that used to be an MOU. And that, is that final yet? With the city, with the?
So, um, what Lori, thank you Lori, uh, for that. So what council has in your packet is the presentation and, and a draft agreement that has been updated by Emily. It's actually updated, so it has volunteer clauses too. So for installation purposes, it's a new template, which is great. So for any future civic project by a community group, whichever community group, we now have a template. So we can standardize this and, and speed up a, a process if, um, council would like to see, uh, more community projects such as this peace poll. Um, and so what, uh, what Rotarians are asking for, Lori and Andre are asking for is, uh, and what staff need is just council guidance on this project that was requested at a previous session. If, if this is something that council would like to see down at Waterfront Park. And if not, would, would there be another location or should um, or, or not at all? Was there anything else you'd like?
What do you think? What do you think? Anything you wanted to add? Mr. McVeigh, go ahead. Yes.
Okay, all right. Um, thank you. Um, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you Rotarians for coming in to talk with us about this issue. Um, I'm quite familiar with peace polls. I worked at a couple of universities um in the Midwest that had peace polls. Um, I'm in favor of peace. Uh, let that be clear. And um, I, I appreciated the apology at the beginning for not engaging with council a little bit earlier in the process. That is always helpful and appreciated. Um, the first I heard of this was at a Rotary meeting when I was a guest and it uh, made it sound like it was kind of a done deal. And so I was a little concerned about that in all candor. Um, I um, uh, I guess a couple of questions. One, i- it looks to me like it, it's gonna basically just be the pole. There wouldn't be, be any sort of significant sized plaza or anything around it. So it would not take, uh, one of our concerns, not just on this issue, but other um, groups that come to us wanting to put things in Waterfront Park is it's a pretty tight space. We have, as you know, we have an awful lot of events down there, arts festivals, et cetera, and sometimes sculptures, artwork can kind of get in the way sometimes. So I'd be, I'm gonna be comfortable with it if it's not a plaza, if it's just a pole, it doesn't look like it takes up much room. Um, so I'd like a little clarification on that if I could. At least that end of Waterfront Park um appeals to me. Uh, I don't see as many issues as opposed to the other end of the park, if you'd been proposing that. So um, that's helpful. I very much appreciate um the commitment to maintaining the peace poll. Um, that hasn't always happened with other Rotary projects and the city has been left holding the bag in terms of some very expensive maintenance on gifts that have been given to us in the past. And so we're trying to not go down that road any further. So I do appreciate um the commitment to maintaining the peace poll. I guess I would say at this point, um, my one concern would be vandalism. Um, what, what are your thoughts about that? Uh, unfortunately, we live in a day and age where there's um people out there who like to damage things in our parks. And unfortunately, uh, it seems to be happening more frequently. So what efforts have been discussed or plan to try to, try to um hold off on um, when that sort of, uh, excuse me, mental block. Um, the uh, what was the vandalism? Thank you. Thank you. Vandalism.
Yes. Well, and, and, and thank you, Councilmember McVeigh, because uh, we've been thinking about kind of the space around it too, which is why we wanted to create the concrete plant to kind of give it that, that structure and not just have the pole planted, you know, in, in the ground. We're also looking at um, maybe just some native plants, like a native grass to grow and cover it. So um, you know, maximum might be six to eight inches around that concrete plant. So, but not a pavilion or not a huge thing um for that. As far as vandalism, I know that's, I agree. That's been one of my, our major concerns with all of this too. So um, we're looking at the, the plaques being attached to the pole with a specialty. You, you take that one. Yes, please.
Just hit that button. Okay.
Yes.
Um, on the plaques, they're, they're uh antique bronze finish, but they will have a security fastener on them. So be very difficult to remove the plaques, but it doesn't stop somebody from vandalizing the plaques altogether uh in place. And so by design, they're um removable as well. So they can be removed, um repaired and or replaced and then put back up. Uh, the pole itself is cedar, so it should be robust at an eight by eight dimension. However, if it was severely damaged for, you know, in a worst case scenario, somebody burned it down, for instance, it, the pole could be replaced as well. So we have enough material at this time for two poles. So if there was an issue.
And you know, the bottom line is we do the best we can and hope that people will overall respect that. And my hope too is that something like that, which really has a message of peace, fingers crossed, is more likely to bring that out in people as opposed to, you know, opposing it or, or, you know, just going nuts. Oh heavens, yes. I won't even apologize for that. No, I definitely. And um, but you know, keep, keeping it clean, keeping it maintained. And if it gets vandalized, figure out how to get it fixed. All, and, and we'll cover all the, the costs of maintenance and labor and volunteer work for all that.
So I have Mr. Eckert, then Mr. Newell. Okay.
Uh, yeah, just a couple of questions. Um, so I'm not familiar really with the concept of peace polls. Um, is it tied with Nagasaki Peace Park? Um, in Japan, is it, is that sort of the network that you're, you said it was in a global network?
I'm not familiar with Nagasaki Park. I would imagine that there's probably a peace poll there.
Well, this is, there's a massive statue actually in, in Nagasaki Peace Park and, and a big giant plaza around it. So I didn't know if, if that, the pole spawned off of the park.
That, good question. I don't know that. Um, chances are it's connected, but I don't know how it, it would be directly.
This, I'm, I'm seeing a tourism link. That's why I was asking. Um, and then just um more practically, um, like you said, this is, you see this as the first, um, it sounds like an ambitious plan. Um, kind of like with what Gary's talking about. A lot of times we have ambitious plans, but we recognize that, you know, particularly in clubs, membership changes. Um, so I know that the agreement says that Rotary is responsible for all future maintenance. Well, what I didn't see in that is what is the city's recourse if we reach a point at which time Rotary has changed enough that Rotary is no longer interested in maintain, maintaining this? Is it the city to remove? Is it the Rotary to remove? Does it become ours by possession and now we have to support it? Like what's, it, there could be an instinct just because people change. And so what happens if we reach that point?
Thank you, Councilmember Eckert. I'm gonna step in and answer this. I had that same question with our legal counsel with Emily. Uh, the agreement that you have is just a project agreement for installation, maintenance. It actually is only for six months. Uh, that's how that agreement is. If we wanted to put something that's much longer, it would look like the, the pump track agreement. These are the specific duties. And for this level of a project where the maintenance is fairly low, uh, we, we, we can craft that if council would like to have that, to have a maintenance agreement. Here are the duties and the frequency. But the peace poll would be um donated to the city. It would be city property. And so the city could decide in the future um that it burns down, uh, leadership changes in Rotary, they do not want to maintain it. It could potentially be removed. I don't think we would, anybody would want that to happen. Um, and so it could be that we form a more com- uh, a, a, a longer maintenance agreement like you saw with the pump track.
Okay.
Can I add to that too as well? So when I say, uh, you know, first of many, um, the other ones, I would like to go out to the schools and have them do it. Them raise money for it, them put it in, then maintain it, all of that. So it's not necessarily me or me and Andre or me and the club kind of taking all this on, but it would be more of an outreach program to say, all right, schools, elementary schools, middle school, high school. You know, if this is an interest to you to create something like this at your school, we will help you figure it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I do have a concern if this is only six months, because six months, especially in the volunteer world, six months is easy to maintain excitement. Six years is not.
And, and let me add just a little clarity, because I had that same question to our legal counsel. Because the, the agreement that you have as a, as a draft is a, it's a project agreement. They agree to install, maintain, put together, uh, manage the volunteers, have the insurance, an ongoing maintenance agreement. It's just a separate document. So we can craft one that is an attachment to this if council would like, set a term. And then, you know, if with any agreement, if um the sponsor organization doesn't want to renew that term, it's, it's city property.
Okay. I just would feel more comfortable if we had something like that. And the reason I, I brought up the outreach is the, the more you spread out, the more volunteers you need. And eventually it reaches a saturation point. And then, then I get to the concern of now do you not have interest in maintaining the original one? Because your folks have gotten a little, spread a little thin and maybe the folks with the initial interest have moved on. And so that's, my concern is it's not six months from now. It's not a year from now. It's 10 years from now. And it, the concern Gary brought up, that's, we've, we've talked about this a couple of times. A lot of good interests, a lot of good, well-meaning folks want to bring things in. But we have to think about what they're gonna look like 10 years from now.
Of course. We certainly respect that. And, and like I said, that the intention is for this one initial kind of showcase piece be maintained by the club. All the other ones are other groups doing it on their own with our support and guidance. And that's it.
Okay. So we have Mr. Newell and then uh Ms. Libdal. Mr. Newell, you have a question?
Thank you for bringing it from a concept. Um, I do believe that we should be focusing on peace and how do we reconcile and how do we live together? Especially it, reminders are helpful in that standpoint, because sometimes we lose track of that. Uh, thank you for mentioning about the virtual maps, because I've been been listening to you, but I, I like maps.
You found it?
Yeah, there's seven of them in the Peget Sound area.
Yes.
Seven. So it's not, there's not hundreds here.
Not yet.
Uh, right. I just, from that standpoint, but it does, when I click through these, some of them are in parks, some of them are private references and, but there's always a relationship to an idea of focusing on peace. It gives us something to, to center on. And I guess from that standpoint, uh, you from standpoint of considering other places, um, back to Gary's and a couple of other discussions, um, our Waterfront Park is busy and we're transiting. And sometimes it's hard to focus. I guess notionally, I'm okay with the concept. You know, is there a place where we could do focus, you know, top of mind, having scoured all of them, Jeff, but you know, it, Netshed Park doesn't have anything in it. Has an overlook, has a couple of park benches. Is that someplace where we could say, hey, that's our peace park or something?
I'm sorry, which park?
Netshed.
That's a good location, actually.
Where, because there isn't a whole lot of other things there. And it could be something that we could gather. And that's where we would, that's where we focus on it. It just, instead of it just being a blur of 20 things. So anyway, notionally good with the idea. Uh, but that's what popped my, to my mind.
All right. Libdal and then, then Tabor.
I really feel like we're belaboring something that's not that complicated. Um, but I, I don't, I like the south end of Waterfront Park, because while it is undergoing a big change, to me, it's symbolic in that it's, it's um that close to the marina. I mean, there's people coming in. It's, it's a different sort of gateway, but people are coming in from other places. And I think that that, I, I kind of like that idea. I do understand that it's maybe not a meditative spot, but I don't think that while peace isn't actually always meditative. So I don't know.
Practice very rarely meditative. Yeah. Go ahead.
I'm against, I'm kidding. Uh, uh, another spot that I was just thinking of is perhaps the, up near the perk where there's gonna be new trails there. And that's the former site, if I'm not mistaken, of the Nike missile silo.
It is.
So it's a pretty powerful statement. There's decommissioned nu- nuclear missile warhead silos up there. Um, and then replaced with peace polls.
So I'm hearing a real consensus that this is yes. Okay. Um, and um, to move this forward, we'll, we'll figure out liability issues. Um, and I think when we actually pass whatever we're gonna pass, it might be nice to have a map of exactly where you're planning to put this thing so that we have a real clear vision about what it is. Are, are you hearing me, Jeff?
Hey, Mayor. So staff will come back with, uh, we'll come back with a maintenance agreement. We'll come back with just a couple of ideas. We heard Netshed Park, Nike Missile Site, and also where to put it at Waterfront Park.
Yeah.
And it, as Councilmember uh Libdal said, it, it, that was, you remember from one of our Monday land use department heads weighed in, because folks are coming from the port right there and it's kind of out of the way on the edge of the park. And council can take a look at those, those ideas.
So I think we have a path going forward.
Yeah, I, we, if you haven't talked with the port folks already, given the proximity of the port, we should make sure to do that too. I'm not sure how much big equipment they may be moving through there at some point in the future with construction projects, something to consider.
Okay. So Ms. Stern, go ahead.
I'm not gonna sing this, but I think all we are saying is let's give peace a chance.
Yes.
And, and Mayor-elect Stern, I will touch that with an eight foot peace pole. You wanted me to tell that joke tonight.
Actually, in, in all, in all seriousness, and uh, another place that would be really nice is we're gonna redo the Mo Street Trail as part, uh, as part. So that might be an interesting place too. So I think we say yes, bring forward the next steps. We'll figure out where we're gonna put it. Okay?
Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Uh, the next thing on our workshop is it's 10C and it's Muriel Iverson Williams Park Scheduling Proposals. And this is Jeff. It's always the little things. It's not the big things.
Let's me go. Good evening again, Mayor, Council, community members. We can make this one fairly succinct. I'm joined by uh our office clerk Shelby Glasgow, who has subbing in as uh, for quite some time, for maybe almost three quarters of the year for our special event coordinator. We've had an absence and she's been doing a phenomenal job. For council's recollection, this first proposal is the, just the follow-up from our October guidance that you weighed in on, on the event scheduling for Muriel Iverson Williams Waterfront Park. Uh, to make sure that the proposal, uh, the scheduling keeps it accessible and in good maintenance. You may recall, uh, so what we're proposing for you is that we would have two seasons, a peak season for scheduling Waterfront Park, specifically for special events. Am I? There we go. Can you hear me okay? For a peak season and an off season, you can see on the screen. Uh, we're gonna keep on moving through. The other thing is if an event wanted to gather during the off season or when it's not allowed, council would still have the authority for the event organizer to come approach council and ask for an exception uh, for either multiple events the same day, or if someone really wanted to run a Tuesday through Thursday event, uh, and council authorize that. With this proposal, there are seven, six, there are six events that would be grandfathered in for Tuesday through Thursday allowable. So Bash by the Bay and June Tunes are all dependent upon when school ends. We can't control that. It varies. Homecoming Parade is always Wednesday. We went back for the years. National Night Out, Tuesday. Summer Nights by the Bay, that's Tuesday. That's because of how everybody else is organizing their concerts. And then Viking Fest starts setting up on Wednesday and ends on Friday. So these events would be uh exempt from that Tuesday through Thursday closed period to let the park rejuvenate and rest and let Public Works perform maintenance. And this is in close collaboration with Public Works. So what we're seeking tonight is three things, a little on policy direction, so we can start updating ordinances and let event organizers know for 2026. They are waiting for this direction. First, that we establish the seasonal use schedule that you saw for a peak season and off season. And the grandfathering, um, that we would update the Polesbo Municipal Code to allow council the flexibility to grant um, up to two additional exceptions. So we're not granting 10, and that defeats the purpose. And to grandfather in those six uh proposed existing events. This would go in effect January 1st of next year. Questions?
We really want to put them in the code?
Our code is outdated. Yes.
Do we want to put these specific events in the code? Is that what you're asking?
That these six events would be grandfathered in. And if we don't want to list the six events in the code, then we can, uh, we can have directions from council that we allow these events without putting that in the code. And when folks ask, well, why do, does um National Night Out, why is that allowed? Because council gave concurrence. Rhiannon's starting to weigh in here. Thank you, Rhiannon. She's our code expert.
I think we would want to do a resolution of council.
Yeah, okay.
Did I say, did I say? Yes. Thank you, Rhiannon. I rely on her.
I, okay. I, if, it gets, can be really complicated when you actually codify certain things. So if we do it by resolution, it'll be a lot easier, right? Okay. Go ahead, Mr. McVeigh.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, Jeff and Shelby, I um, I of course read the packet presentation and uh, I, I thought you did. and, uh, I, I thought you did a, a fine job with it. Um, I think it makes, uh, a world of sense. I really didn't see any major issues. Um, and I think it would help very much to have clarity around some of these issues.
I think that was a thumbs up. Any, any other, any other ideas, concepts, any other problems? Okay. Yeah, well, we can put this on the consent and it'll be a resolution. Does that work?
Yes.
Not related to this question, but I appreciate Jeff giving credit to Shelby and the other workers in the Parks Department. And in that regard, uh, I'm going to tag on and I'd like to give credit, Mayor, to your employee Rachel Cornet during the November 11th Veterans Parade. She did an outstanding job emceeing it, singing the Star-Spangled Banner, keeping the crowd engaged. You've got a cast of thousands that are real stars, Jeff.
I know, they're great. Best team ever here at the city.
Okay, go ahead, Rick.
Yeah, just to clarify, so will be a resolution that basically states these three things and then the code amendments are going to come later?
No, we, you, you don't want anything that's specific in code. So it's a resolution will say we're going to have this many events with potentially several others, but that's it.
Well, the middle one was talking about the flexibility. Is that still going to be a code amendment? Um, number two on that list?
Let me go back.
Yeah.
Rhiannon, I have to ask you on that.
Does that one still need to be a code amendment?
Yeah, that's why, that's why this is problematic to put this in code. This should be done by resolution, correct?
That's why I was seeking clarity. If, if this is coming in two pieces or?
I would have to actually read the code to give advice on this, um, and what currently exists, if it needs to be updated.
Because there's a couple, the, as, as council members and Mayor knows, we have some outdated sections, so we'll, we'll work with the Clerk's Office to make sure.
I mean, if the resolution basically said direct staff to update Pulseville Municipal Code as appropriate, that would still let them give the direction and then they can
Put that specific stuff in the code. Okay, so, but that's staff stuff. We'll take care of that. Okay? We have, we have good direction.
Great. Thank you, Council. That is a long time coming.
I still want to hold up the one January implementation by us having to do this in multiple parts.
Okay, all right. Um, go ahead. Is there anything else, Jeff?
There's one more presentation.
One more presentation?
See how fast that one went?
Um, we have the special event permit application update fees proposal, and that's Jeff and Jeff and Jeb, Jeff and Glasgow. What's your first name?
Shelby.
Shelby. Okay, got it.
Okay, hang on. Uh, it's going to be this one. This one is going to be a little longer because this one is, involves a lot of research. And so we'll, we'll go through it. If I go too fast, please let us know, but it's getting late and I want to be respectful time. Let me make this a little bit bigger. And I also want to give another shout out to Shelby on this. She's put in a lot of time and effort in each of our meetings in getting this research. So in short, here we go. Council directed staff to research and propose updates to special events and make sure our application fees, this is separate from cost recovery. We'll be very clear. This is just when someone applies for a permit, what do they pay for the application? Okay. Uh, and, and that's based on administrative time to review these because we have forty now. As of today, forty applications for 2025. So little background, currently at seventy-five dollars. You want to have host a special event, seventy-five dollars, and you should be applying ninety days in advance. That's well in line with where other municipalities are across the state. The second part is if someone doesn't apply by ninety days, there's a late charge. This is also very common in municipalities. Ours is a very low fee currently of fifty dollars. Uh, and they would have to apply within forty-five days to eighty-nine days. With the exception that it cannot contain road closures or, uh, because that takes additional review by Public Works and Police. So far, so good, right? Lastly, someone files at forty-five, uh, less than forty-five days, it's, it's not enough time for staff to go through the full review process. Also quite in line. So we took a look at other agencies. There's actually twenty-six that we did take a look at. I just peeled a couple of them off here for you. Their fees vary. They vary from a very nominal fee where the council has decided to subsidize all the events is why we found that to recover the full administrative cost to much higher amount. We also chatted with our legal department and learned that, uh, you may recall from our previous presentation, I had a, an idea of, uh, under five hundred people, you pay this much, over five hundred people this much, and over five thousand. That was the, just a working template. And discussing this with our legal counsel, we, we can't make money as a city on special event permits. So the, the guidance was how much administrative time is required? It's very objective. So we're sharing this data for your information. And the other part is if it's a really big, complex event, it's probably going to take road closures and, and streets closed. It's going to take more administrative time. So we looked at that data.
Jeff, is that also then why we're not separating between profit and nonprofit? Because we can't, we have to have one fee structure because we can't make money?
It's less that, how, so we had ample discussion, and I'll be brief on this. Organizations, including organizations that are seen as extremely local here. Is it the organizer who's, has a mailing address in city limits? What happens if they're outside of city limits, but they have their business here? What happens if their boards in city limits, but not all of them? It became extremely muddy trying to decide who's a nonprofit, who's not, I'm sorry, who's in city limits, who's not? And then when it came to profit versus nonprofit, we shouldn't be determining that because there's more tax delineations. There are cities that do do that, but it is, it is complex. So we talked about it, discussed it, and reduced it down to the simplest accessible model. And so we're going to share that data. Here's the amount of hours, and I would like to point this out. Um, what you're not seeing is a, is a very long spreadsheet. Just this year, Parks and Rec has put in, and this is the special event coordinator, four hundred and sixty-five hours. You'll remember, and I'm looking at, um, uh, Councilmember Crowe because her agency, the Kidset Regional Library, was the only one who put in a perfect application that took five hours. Every other application took more. Public Works, hundred and twenty-three, and Police, ninety-eight. I do want to say that these numbers are very conservative because they don't take in Mike's time and his team's time and, or our police time when they meet one-on-one with event organizers to talk about road closures, where barricades go. That's not included in this. This is reviewing paperwork time. So far, okay? So it's six hundred plus hours. That's right. So we worked with the Finance Department to average folks' salaries roughly. Uh, this includes benefits, fifty to sixty-five. I'll be, I'm going. I just want to make sure you have the information. Conservatively, thirty-four thousand to forty-four thousand dollars in administrative time to process permits, uh, conservatively. The next thing is best case scenario, if everybody was like Pam's team, I'm giving her credit to do on this one. And it's a perfect application, and this is the number one challenge for every single agency we spoke with. Uh, it would take Parks and Rec five hours. It would take Public Works three hours and Police two hours. This is outside of those road review, road closure meetings. Uh, I do want to say and call on Shelby on this so you can understand briefly how those five hours are utilized.
So it starts with, um, by the way, thank you for having me back again. It's nice to see you. It starts with when we get the email in from the applicant and we have to review it. And then, um, I add the file to my N drive so that it's viewable and also to my email. Um, but then we verify all the information is correct. Everything's signed, insurance is in, site maps are there. Um, and then we get ready for, um, to email it out to everybody. So we have to, um, compact them and then redact them. And then I send out the emails and then I receive department head approvals with or without conditions. Uh, the next step, um, I send emails out to the organi- organizers with what we still need from them and what to expect stepwise. Um, then I update, uh, spreadsheets and also follow up with Public Works and the Police Department for cost recovery. Um, with the spreadsheets, I update those. I try to update them every Saturday. That's kind of like the way I do it. I add any email responses that I get back from anybody to the N drive so that they're also available.
And I just want to point out that you're, you're hearing all of these steps take time. It's not, oh, here's an application and it's done. It is in-depth and the work that Shelby and the, and our larger city team do, any single city member can go into the file and pull up it. So Mayor has an answer, Rob has an answer, anyone has question can have it to you with emails and written documentation. So it's very transparent, but it takes the time to do this.
Um, we also have a city sign-off sheet, which is probably my favorite thing. It has everything listed in one spot and I can just check it off. So I do that as well. And then prep for City Council, which includes Granicus and then making one of my infamous folders. I'm a paper person. I have to have the paper.
Well, and last thing, and I, I would still want to be respectful of time, but the amount of work that Shelby's put in that folder, if council ever has a question on these updates, when you hear about special events, she has all the answers and she prepares that behind the scenes. You don't likely see that until you have a question, but that takes time. So you have the answers that you need at, uh, for the most efficient when these are brought up to the community. Thank you, Shelby.
And then, of course, City Council presentation. And then I issued the permit via DocuSign and then I get it, when it gets signed and sent back to me, I put it in the file. So it's there also if you wanted to see it. And then the first Tuesday of every month, we host a special event monthly coordination meeting with the Police Department and Public Works, Jeff, Pat, and myself. And it takes roughly four point seven five hours if it's a perfect application. If it's not, then we're looking at significantly longer time.
Bainbridge is five hours and they go up to thirteen hours. I just talked to Laura Shear earlier this week. We are doing pretty well, but I want to make sure you're informed about this. So ten hours, ten hours times this, this is what we should be charging uh, if we were doing full administrative cost recovery. That said, that's a really large jump from seventy-five dollars. So there's some good news. We have a, we have a lodging, lodging tax pays for the special event coordinator. This is the benefit of why we have this position. We get half that. So Shelby's been stepping into that role, but when we have our special event coordinator, half the cost is reduced, which is great. Uh, if we were doing full administrative recovery, it would be two fifty to three twenty-five. We feel that there's ways to improve the system. Bring it online, streamline the process, host an annual town hall, uh, once, uh, once, uh, once a year with event organizers who can ask questions and then start, uh, requiring in-person application review so they get all the information upfront and the specific deadlines of when things need to be submitted and then automate it all online. So it sends reminders. Finally, we do need to mention this again, granting exceptions to deadlines causes staff to just pour the hours in. Uh, the example is there was a, you heard us talk about, uh, it was no fault of their own. They switched event organizers. They've never had to do a permit. And we had five days to scramble and Shelby put thirty-five hours in going back and forth through insurance and all their applications. So the city was protected. And that was Coffee Oasis. No fault on their end. They just switched people. But because it was last second and, and we need to make sure the city and our community is protected, we had to sink that time in. So just as we hear about things, we want to steer people to a formative, transparent process.
So I'm reminded of our work all the years with the Parking Committee leading up to our conclusions. And what we talked about often was we were trying to affect people's behavior, right? That was what a lot of the intention and the the modeling was for. And so the point of that remark is the last bullet point, Jeff, not granting exceptions to deadline requirements. However, we're still a small town and things still happen. And so I would think what we're trying to do is affect their behavior to be in the process because it saves the organization a considerable expense. Let's call it that. And we want to avoid the burden on staff, but these are going to happen. I would think just saying not granting exceptions, I think we could say there's a considerable cost to the consideration of a grant that would make people avoid that behavior, but not preclude that event in the event that it is a special situation. I'm just throwing that out there.
Limiting exceptions, we can say. Thank you, council member. There, there's always something that's going to happen out there, but just so we understand how, council understands if something was granted, the impacts down the line. Uh, so here's the proposal. Uh, you, you saw it was five hundred to six fifty. It's really two fifty if we take the special event coordinator who's funded by LTAC. But because there's ways we can work on the process improvements, and we have a demo this Friday of a new software, we're proposing, uh, one seventy-five. So that's a hundred dollar increase that brings us in line with around other jurisdictions. It's a council, it's a council direction about if you would like, if council would like to subsidize this. We have forty events at this moment. Or if we just take the first step and revisit this next year, and you'll see this in, in just a moment. So first, seventy-five to one seventy-five. And then really, the main issue is the late filing. And that's, that's on the event organizer. If it's submitted earlier, they don't have to pay any late filing. If it's late, pay, pay the fee fifty, like the parking, uh, discussion. There needs to be a cost to that because it's going to require more hours guaranteed. And then, uh, incomplete filing. Uh, we strive to avoid granting exceptions, but you know, there's going to be cases that come up, of course. So it's, it's not hard and fast, but we really want to try to work around that.
So, Ed, if you're saying that you still want to have the ability to grant exceptions, will we consider then, so the late, if you jump back one, Jeff, the late fee is one fifty if it's still at forty-five days. If it's under forty-five days, is that going, are we going to make that three hundred? If you're under forty-five, like if we're going to make it that we're going to still allow last minute Jeff, Ron, Diane's staff are jumping through hoops and, and doing everything they can to make something happen. You know, we're still not a cost recovery at this point. Now we're even further in the hole. Are we going to, so are we going to have late, late fee and make it double the late fee or how are we going to handle that?
I think we're trying to affect behavior.
Yeah, we're opening the door to still have people do this.
We want to give every encouragement to an organization that's trying to raise money in many, most cases nonprofits. They're not looking to waste their money. It's precious resources that they'll get it in, in time. But there could be that situation. I don't think we should preclude it by just saying not acceptable, but it should be substantial uh, in order to affect the behavior that short of an emergency. They're going to follow the process and it's not necessarily granting them automatic approval. It's still subject to all the conditions and, and reviews.
And so I'll, I'll just give an example. If forty-five days is on a Friday and someone, you know, they call us and they can't get things and they can submit it first thing Monday, we, we can make that work. Um, what, what the other examples, we did have a, a community organization reach out to us last month who wanted to do a road closure and wanted to do a celebration down, um, postmark into Front Street with a procession that involves road closures and we had thirteen days, eighteen days? That was a solid no. It, it, it affects too many departments and too many folks and council wouldn't even have potential knowledge. So we had to let them know, um, thank you, but you know, there's, there's, hopefully there's other ways where you can gather uh, and not have a road closure and not require a special event permit.
Did, go, go ahead.
Honestly, I feel like this is a little low.
Yeah.
I was gonna I mean, I feel like these two hundred dollar base rate at least and a two hundred dollar late fee.
It's double.
Double.
Come on here. There we are. So that's comparables.
Yeah, I know, but you said that they are heavily subsidizing those events.
They, they are subsidizing. I, we checked all the information.
Still subsidizing even at the rates I just put.
We're looking for council direction and we're, we're, we're being conservative because, so we
I think it should be the same as squim.
You don't
You guys are working so hard and you're, I'm super tired just like listening to all these things that you're, and it's not just because it, it's just like, it's a lot. It's a lot.
Did you know that's the motto of Parks and Rec right now?
I, I think that, I, Gary, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, but first of all, thank, thank you for all the research. Um, you know, we've been, uh, looking forward to receiving this presentation. Uh, I, I've been one of, one of the folks, uh, raising my hand to say we're, we, we need to raise these fees. We're, we're losing money. It's just too cheap. Um, we need to cover our costs. Um, I, I'm not sure. Um, I appreciate we're trying to recoup the costs from the, uh, application, time spent on the applications. I'm not sure why we wouldn't include some of the time when Public Works and the Police Department meets with organizers. I'm not quite sure why we couldn't include a little bit of that. Um, because that meeting time, it seems to me pretty valuable. So I'd be comfortable with one seventy-five to two hundred. I think that um, is certainly well within line of, um, other cities. Um, I think it recognizes uh, the true cost of, um, uh, administering these events. And a, a lot of these events are fundraising events and some organizations do quite well. Um, and so I think it's kind of, it, it can be a win-win. Um, so, um, I, I would, those are my thoughts, I guess.
All right. Go ahead.
This is good. I, the, the one that leaves me wondering that I'm most concerned about, isn't this review process and fees, it's once the events are happening, it's going to be our charges for Public Works and Police onsite. And I'm waiting for that other shoe to drop. I'm in trepidation of it because any number of these events are the ultimate motivation way back when and the outcome, isn't the event per se, though that's what the community enjoys, it's scholarship raising for our high school students and other worthy per se, though that's what the community enjoys. It's scholarship raising for our high school students and other worthy causes. And I'm worried that those events are going to find themselves scrambling to cover every last offset of the Public Works and Police costs and find themselves no longer able to afford what was the original motivation, which was scholarships and other community good of a substantive nature. And so that's what I'm in trepidation of hearing when that happens.
Well, Ed, sometimes it's not even, sometimes it's just little kids trick or treating on Halloween. I mean, that's not, there's that's not even a fundraiser, you know, but it does take, it does take effort and street closures and, okay. Um, Mr. Eckhart has a question.
Um, yeah, I I I support Britt's suggestion, the newer amounts. I I think we we do need as close to cost recovery as as is effective without chasing events away. Looking at that list, like the lowest one on there I noticed was Edmund's, but I also, I've seen a a couple news stories about the state of Edmund's budget and I don't know that they're going to be subsidizing those events much longer. Um, they're, they're in trouble over there. My, my, my overall other question that we haven't even touched on though, um, the more strict that we get and the higher our prices, what is our uh, plan remedy for when people just avoid applying altogether and for hold their event anyway? Because they're not going to meet our rules. They're not, they're under forty five days. They don't want to pay the fee and they just hold an event. They're not, it's not within the right days of the week from the last presentation. They just organize something and do it. Um, because it just happened a week ago.
It's in our code.
Now we're outside that, we're in the shoulder schedule, so it's, it's not, it would fall in the, it was okay during the week, but we had somebody just organize an event in Downwater Side Park that they even put in their notes, because the city isn't approving new events, we're just going to gather. So.
Really? I never heard about.
I haven't heard about that.
Yes, but I will share offline.
To to answer your question, counsel.
So is that a code enforcement situation or is that, so? You know, what is our plan to make sure that we aren't driving people to then not follow the process?
So that's in the code and that's a different conversation. What you have and it's what's helpful is this feedback is doing the market research, getting councils input of how do we not price folks out and what is uh, appropriate to to increase the fees? And then online work on staff are going to work on a process and we also are going to have a subcommittee of event organizers who can weigh in, what's the barriers with the city, what what's stopping you from running an event? So we can have their input um, and then host some town halls. Our goal is to make it so we're not being overly bureaucratic and keeping it very open and accessible. And if council would like us to do the um, to have a full administrative cost recovery at the, at the two fifty or one seventy five or two hundred, I just need a little direction so we can move forward with that.
What the, let's give, what decisions?
I like two hundred and two hundred.
Two hundred, two hundred.
I could support that.
Two hundred, two hundred. Okay, that's two hundred for application and addition. It doubles if you're late.
Got it.
Two hundred, two hundred. Okay, what are the decisions are you looking for from council? Uh, go ahead, Doug.
I guess just in this standpoint, and it seems to be recurring at some level, I know I'm going to extrapolate it, but we are some taxpayer funded organization to provide services to our community. We are not a cost recovery agency that's trying to recover all of our costs like some. We are not an enterprise fund. We are taxpayer. So I just want to be cautious on, hey, we have to recover costs. We're here to try to support our community gathering and enabling in our parks and other things. So it's it's a statement, but I just want to be cautious about, hey, every last dime we got to capture because that's if we're going to do that and we're going to shift to full cost recovery, then we need to cut our taxes.
Yeah, well, I I don't think anybody's expecting for full cost recovery. We're just, you're.
I just, it just feels like we're incrementally on various topics in this space and so just throwing that on the table.
Yeah, and remembering that a lot of people that are, that are doing these applications and throwing these events are not city residents. Okay, they are not, they're, they're, they live outside city limits. I mean, the vast, vast majority can do, so.
And I think that that was the second piece because this is not the cost to rent the park. This is the cost to file it. So there's a second piece of this, which is renting the event center, which to me, that's potentially where we, you know, we could differentiate and be on that stand. This is just, hey, filling out the form.
Right. Okay, so do you have the information you need?
We have council. What I'm hearing is council, staff, we're looking for council direction on this. And what we heard is two hundred and two hundred. We will implement that and we'll revisit it, see how it's going next year.
Okay, is that all you need then, Jeff? Were we good?
We're all solid.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, council.
Okay, uh, we are moving on in the workshop because it's almost eight o'clock. Uh, the next thing is questions and concerns of the council, future agenda items. Anything? Mr. Eckert.
Um, yeah, just something for the rest of the council. In reviewing our procedures, council procedures operation, because I wanted to make sure I I did the recusal right tonight. Um, I did also notice something. It was mentioned last week prior to going to, going to the budget, three council members met with with Rob and and Dev, and it was referred to as an ad hoc finance committee, and I know we've done that, it's, that's been going on. Our procedures say that in order to form an ad hoc committee, that requires the agreement of the majority of the council. Um, so we just want to be cautious of subcommittees forming without the approval of the whole council. So that is, that is in violation of our policies. So, yeah, I just read that and as I was reviewing, so.
Thank you. All right. Any other uh, questions and concerns of the uh, council? Seeing none. Continued public comment. Any public comments? Go ahead. How are you, Herb?
Good evening. Sorry, I'm limping my feet knee getting old. Been here since nineteen eighty nine. There's a progress going on. He did cost recovery. When I was with the City of Phoenix in operations analysis and program analysis, we had three budgets. We had the operating budget, manpower budget, capital budget. We did ABC, activity based costing. Why? Because we didn't want to increase all manpower. The manpower included, you know, holidays, sick leave, et cetera, et cetera. So if you've got a baseline on your recovery and ABC, activity based costing, now you can give your directors a chance to supplement as needed. That's number one. Uh, number two was, oh, been here a long time. You get to see, it was a um. Uh, it's so to speak, you took each case as a judge does, case by case. There may have been uh, suggested, you know, fines. Okay, what, what am I leading up to is we've got sovereignty within a sovereignty going on. You've got small tribal concerns. So this thing about, I don't know, this uh, Esquire Garrett bringing up, that's not really the job off. But when I got here in eighty nine was Paul's was concerned. Paul's was concerned is at the lower level. It was still an ABC costing. We're still looking at how to get our tribe moving along. At five thousand, ten thousand, fifteen thousand populations, there are certain things that happen, especially in public works. For example, we knew Phoenix, when I was at Phoenix, it's expanding. So we had park plan A, B and C. We knew A had one tree, two trees, B had three trees, et cetera. Why? Because we know it takes two hours man hours to clean up the park. So you've calculated when the grass goes, how you're going to do this, your manpower, we figured out the manpower. When you start sticking in this, in waterfront and this, in Centennial Park, uh, you then increase the workload beyond what staffing or your ABC or your budget, your manpower budget, because you've calculated, you only need thirty people to do X number of man hours of work based out by break this, pull that, et cetera. So I got the yellow light. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. It's good seeing you. Good to you. Okay, any other public comments? Okay. Mayor and council comments, anything left? Go ahead.
I just want to comment on Herb's, what he shared. And it's that difference between, and Mayor, you've been here a long time now, being a big town, becoming a small city, right? It used to be the departments, the enterprises would all support each other. What are the reasons we, the solid way stayed on? Because when we're short shifting, solid ways can move to public works. Our mechanic helps in other departments. It's a real goodwill. Let's get her done. As we grow up now, we're breaking things down into units, level of service. Herb was talking about classes of park and then we live with that discipline and we lose some of the flexibility. And it's just a matter of when do we reach that point of transition from a big town to a small city in actuality, not just a code from the state because we have a certain population. So it it has to do with can do versus will do.
Okay, any more council comments this evening? Okay, I entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved. Okay, motion is second. All in favor, say aye. We're adjourned. Three left.